Your Honor, a proclamation. Whereas employees at the City of Batavia dedicate their time and their talents to public service with each employee contributing to provide essential services to the people of our city, and whereas the City of Batavia employees impact daily life through their work in protecting public safety and health, building and maintaining roads and infrastructure, promoting economic growth, providing clean water supply, maintaining cities' reliable electric source, finance, information technology, and human resources, internal services, and many others, and whereas these dedicated individuals strive daily to perform their jobs with professionalism and integrity in order to improve the lives of all people, and whereas the employees' work often happens behind the scenes and without public recognition, and whereas the City of Batavia expresses sincere gratitude to the City of Batavia employees who demonstrate leadership, courage, and compassion in service to our city. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Day Schalke, Mayor of Batavia, Illinois, by signaling, by signing this official proclamation, do hereby officially proclaim March 9th through 13th, 2020, as City of Batavia Employee Recognition Week. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second?
Moved by Alderman. Chanson, it's second amendment not for the approval of the proclamation for City Employee Week is read. Any discussion? I might just notice, we did have a City Employee Breakfast last week, which was nicely put on by our Human Resources Department. I had the opportunity to then to thank them all for what is an extraordinarily great job. I very, 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 very seldom get any complaints about City Employees. I get a lot of compliments. All the agencies involved seem to always have somebody that's a fan and really appreciates it. And there are time after time after time, week after week after week, when our people go out and do some very amazing and supportive things to help this town remain the nice place it is. And many times, we go the extra mile of support and work and vision and trying to bring together some dilemma that needs to be overcome in some neighborhood, whether it's, you know, a tree that's hanging low over the street, or a water line that's broke, or sewer line that's broke, or a police and fire emergency, or a ESDA call-out for tornado warning. There is just a number of times that I have gotten compliments about how great a group of employees we get. So I appreciate the council's support of this because we really do, I think, have something that's very, very special to Batavia. Did we take the vote on that?
No.
No. Okay, Court calls the roll. Chanson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Farron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knapp? Aye. Motion is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's none a. Moving then to item number 10, Main Street Report. We have our new executive director here. Hello.
Doing well. Just a few things to go over today, and I'm going to go as quickly as I can. First of all, some good news. Our Boardwalk Shops, we were very pleased to have chosen all of the applicants that will be housed in our Eat Boardwalk Shops come this summer. So just wanted to share a little bit of information. We had a nice array. We're very pleased with the variety of the applicants that we got, and the, I would say, the thoroughness, oh, I'm sorry. The thoroughness of their questions and their applications and how well-prepared they were. But just to share with you, the first business, Light &amp; Pine, that is a trio of artisans. There is one which is knit products, one which is candles, and another that's home decor that are going to share the space and fill it. Boardwalk Bowls is like a yogurt and acai bowl that looks absolutely delicious, pre-made and packaged and ready to go for people walking, biking, driving by, at work, need a lift. Desmond Brown Designs, which is a variety of home decor and gifts. Unbooring Snacks, which Alderman Callahan will share is some of the tastiest granola that we have ever had. Again, perfect for, you know, people walking and riding bikes and hanging out downtown. Haley Bee's Bakery, which will offer cupcakes and cookies and muffins and, we're hoping, breads. She also does great custom cookies, so if you need anything for a business, for a party, anything specially made, they're delicious. The other six, which is going to be a men's clothing and accessory-related business, that's actually being spearheaded as a new business by one of our current Batavia business owners. Dash 10 Works, which is wood carving, veteran-owned wood carving for home decor and tables and things like that. And Larson Pet Boutique, which is going to sell pet supplies, accessories, possibly pet treats, we're checking into that. I think it's a really nice array. We're excited, they're excited, construction is moving along, and I think this is going to be a big boost to our downtown economy going forward. Okay. Now, just some updates on what's gone on this week. Restaurant Madness, which is an event that is sort of a trio spearheading it of Main Street, the city, and the Chamber of Commerce, we've decided that that won't happen this year. It might seem obvious, but we actually did relay a couple of different options that we could going forward, but in the end, it was decided that after all of this, to even delay and then come back and ask the restaurants, who were barely making it through a few weeks, to then take 20% off once business picks up was just not something that we could support. So that event will be canceled. On a high note, the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, with cooperation from the city and brought together by Mr. Callahan, we created a directory today, and some of you may have seen it, and if you haven't, it'll be on all the websites tomorrow. It's a directory of all the Batavia restaurants and what they're offering currently. Carryout, delivery, curbside drive-up, drive-through, what their hours are, if they've closed. It's a live directory on Google, so it's something that we can update easily as things change, since they've changed so dramatically and so quickly over the last few days. We expect there to be changes as our restaurants sort of get a feel for how much business they're getting. Certainly, I expect to see changes in hours. So that document allows us that fluidity to change at any time. We've already posted it on social media, and we've gotten a tremendous response, not only from the restaurants, who are greatly appreciative, but from the community as well. We have a community that really wants to support their local businesses, so that's been great. Merchants, too. We're in consultation with our downtown merchants about who's closing, reducing hours, offering new things. So look for more promotion of that via Main Street and the Chamber as well, as I'm sure that'll change. Egg Hop, which is one of our April events, April 11th, for now, we still have that on the books. There's no harm in holding right now and waiting to see how things go over the next couple of weeks. Everything is so quickly changing, so for now, that's still on the books. And we'll probably make a determination on that, whether it's a go or not, by April 1st. Checking the pulse of our sponsors, of our business community, and obviously, any direction we get from the state and from you guys. Our farmer's market, our indoor farmer's market, was huge this week. Absolutely huge. We had one booth do over $1,000 worth of business. As such, we are going to accommodate a half a dozen, I think eight vendors, Beth told me, eight vendors, who take pre-orders already online and bring those pre-orders to town to fill for people, and we'll handle it just like carryout. So we've talked to John at Bar Revolution, and it will be handled the same way carryout would be from a restaurant. You place your order online, and we'll promote that this week so more people know about it. You place your order online and pay for it, and you can come and pick up your bag of stuff from your farmer's market vendor, just like as if it were carryout. We were pleased to be able to offer that service. A lot of our farmer's market vendors, they really depend on the indoor market. We're one of the few that continues throughout the year. I think that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Maybe just a comment on the Boardwalk Shops. We actually had more applicants than shops, which was a good thing to begin with, and it was a hard decision as to those choices, but it was easy in the fact that their business plans and their models all are just absolutely fantastic. All of them, I believe, are trying to take a small incubator business for this year and try to make something bigger in the long run.
Absolutely.
Which I'm sure was everyone's goal. They had business plans that laid out. It was professional, it was fantastic. You would think that we had ringers coming in, that they were already business owners, but a lot of them are just starting out, they're just trying to figure it out. I know that you guys are doing a great job with making sure that they do succeed by lining them up with Wabonzi and the Fox Valley Entrepreneurial Society. All of those things are just going to hopefully make more businesses for our town and small businesses grow, and I think you guys have been doing a phenomenal job on that.
Oh, well, thank you. And really, a lot of kudos goes out to my predecessor, Jamie Samm, who's been our volunteer liaison on this project with those applicants and really sort of vetted that stuff before it got to committee and helped with all the questions people had about their business plans and the hours and things like that. So she's really done an excellent job for us in that regard, as a spokesperson for the project. The only other thing I'd like to say is, as we move forward in the next couple of weeks, as things in regard to our concerns for our healthy neighborhoods continue and what we need to do, I ask you to just remember that your business neighbors are still members of the neighborhood. Absolutely, the health and welfare of our community comes first, but please, as those decisions come down and as some of those come onto the city, if you would just take that into consideration, be as clear as possible, because we've had some problems with clarity of rules and things that have come down from the state, and really, just anything we can do to, within the parameters of the health and well-being of our community, to accommodate reasonably the burden that's on those small businesses. We're a growing business community, we want to keep growing. I want to see as many of these businesses thrive in June as we're thriving in January. So anything you can do, please feel free to reach out to us to help disseminate information. That's what we're here to help you do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is Resolution 20-043-R, authorizing extension of City of Batavia, Washington Wilson Tax Increment Financing District. Alderman Callahan?
So this is, as of January of 2017, the city created a tax increment allocation finance district, or a TIF district, commonly known as the Washington Wilson TIF, and the TIF is for 23 years. At the time it was created, it was, the city entered into a redevelopment agreement with Shodine Development to build a $40 million mixed-use development that included commercial space, parking, and 186 residential apartments. Under the terms of the RDA at that time, the city was to issue $14 million in bonds, and that if sufficient increment existed, the bonds would be paid off, the developer could be reimbursed an additional $2 million in costs reimbursable under the TIF. Approximately $9 million of that would go to the city parking garage that the city would own. The redevelopment agreement, as we know, contained several safeguards that protected the city's ability to pay, the city's ability to repay those bonds should the increment be generated. That included a special service agreement, a special service area, SSA, which would be activated if there were insufficient funds to be paid by the developer. The redevelopment also included several off-ramps, which could be exercised by either party. The city had an off-ramp regarding environmental contamination, if the contamination was deemed too expensive. And the developer also had off-ramps, such as the inability to secure financing or for the city to fail to perform any of the city's obligations. The city proceeded, and ultimately, there was a delay in mid-2017 where there was an underestimation of costs regarding the parking deck. It came back to us for the first restated redevelopment agreement, which resulted in the approval of a project plan, including 134 apartments, 335 spaces, a reduction in commercial space to 6,000, and a new amount of $16 million. That was passed in January of 18. In that restated agreement, it kind of reset the clock, and the reimbursable expenses in the event of termination by the city were taken into consideration at that time. Unfortunately, there was another delay in this project, which was the second delay in mid-2018. As demolition began, there was environmental contamination that was found. A plan was put forth by the IDPA, and, which resulted in also a second restated RDA. The parties remet back in February, beginning of February, and calculations showed that three years having passed, there was a delay, which threw into the repayment of the insufficient increment. As a result, there are three alternatives for us to consider tonight. Number one, seek an extension of the TIF. This law allows us to seek an additional 12 years. This option would be done through state legislative action and requires the approval of each of the taxing bodies, including the school district. The second, we could also enter into an intergovernmental agreement with taxing bodies that the TIF could be dissolved early if these costs were all covered. Number two, the city could TIF, DTIF, and RETIF these areas, which would reset the 23-year clock. This might cover the bonds, but it leaves the possibility that anything more to cover the city's costs may not exist. Or, number three, the project could be redesigned smaller so that the numbers do work. In any case, the city council might decide to remarket the property or seek other developers as well. Laura, if you'd take over and describe the benefits of those.
Sure. So as regarding the first one, extending the TIF, it appears to be the most beneficial to the city in three regards. Number one, it maximizes the potential for the bonds to be paid off within the TIF term and without having to implement a substantial SSA. Secondly, it provides, of the three alternatives, it's probably the only alternative that would provide the opportunity for the city to recoup some of the costs that it has put into the project, such as for property acquisition, improvements that were made to the utilities surrounding the project, as well as for the substantial costs of the environmental remediation. Without an extension, it's not likely that there's enough increment to cover those costs. And then finally, the TIF extension provides the city with the greatest period of time within which to find an alternate project, just in case this project would not ultimately be built. As we know, there are certain off-ramps that still exist here. The developer's inability to secure financing for the construction of the project is one of those. Another one would be if the construction bids come back substantially higher than what they were originally estimated. And that would thus make the project, once again, financially not feasible. So staff has had conversations with the staff at other taxing bodies, and I do know that they felt that it was influential to the decision of their governing bodies, having such a substantial project already secured. I don't know whether, if this project didn't exist, if they would be willing to go along with an extension of the TIF term. So if council approves the extension, then staff will coordinate with those other taxing bodies. Senator Don DeWitt has already offered to enact the legislation to enact the extension, and it is possible still here in the spring session, which ends May 29th, or due to delays because they're not meeting now, perhaps that might be extended. But doing so would afford the greatest possibility that we could still get this project under construction sometime in the fall of 2020. If council does not approve the extension of the TIF, then probably the next step here is that either, you know, the developer may come back with the announcement that they're not able to seek the financing, in which case, we would just dissolve the RDA and part ways, and then we would have to look for another developer who would be willing to offer us a project. However, it would be a project where we're starting with only 20 years on the TIF, it would probably take a few years for us to put another deal together, and so there would be less time than the calculated bond repayment that was a concern here, that there's only, you know, maybe 12 and 1/2 million there in bonds that might be issued for a future project. So the alternative that has the potential to produce the most benefit for the City of Batavia is extending the TIF. Tonight, in addition to the developer, we also have the city's financial consultant here from Kane McKenna. His name is Zorn. I'm going to pronounce your last name wrong. Milatinevic, who is here. Kane McKenna did the original analysis of the rate of return on this project. That's not what we hired them for this time. It was mainly to go over the numbers that had been provided from the developer concerning the expected increment, and merely to determine whether those calculations were reasonable, and then what that effect was on the project. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Zorn, who can explain what their analysis and conclusions were.
Good evening. My name is Zorn Milatinevic. I'm with Kane McKenna and Associates. Thank you for having me here this evening. Just to add a couple of actually additional benefits to the extension of the TIF term, one of them is somewhat minor, but an important one, is it's probably the most cost-effective way, from an economic standpoint, to extend a TIF. The creation to DTIF and RETIF, it's a long process, there's additional costs involved, hiring consultants, hiring attorneys, whereby, just the extension of the TIF, it's a relatively minor amendment to the redevelopment plan, and it doesn't take much effort, other than getting this through the legislature and negotiating with the taxing districts. The other side of it also, and I think is mentioned, is the potential for, you know, whether this development moves forward or another development is sought after. It's important to developers to see that there's a commitment from a municipality that they're going to move forward with some type of financing, if that's what's necessary. When you have a TIF in place and you have the flexibility, you have the commitment, whether it's the existing TIF, which may not, whether another developer comes in, may not be sufficient. If there is a TIF extension, it's much easier to attract developers into the future, whichever way it's decided, the city decides to move forward with. So that's, long and short, really, the reason the TIF Act, the amendment to the TIF Act was created to provide for this 12-year extension is in cases like this, where development has been delayed. You know, there have been cases where you have issues like this, where you have environmental, you have economic, we've seen them back in 2008, where that happened quite often. There's probably been over 100 TIF extensions that have happened, that have occurred since the TIF, this amendment to the TIF Act occurred. One example is the City of Naperville, they created their Water Street TIF before 2008. The economic downturn caused a delay in development, it actually caused a different type of project to even be built there than was originally anticipated, and they had sought a TIF extension on that. So that's one example of a nearby community that's done that before. So, you know, it is a great tool, it's easy, you know, relatively easy in compared to doing a DTIF or RETIF. That's one of the benefits of that. As far as our analysis, as was pointed out, we weren't engaged to look at the rate of return on a holistic basis. We, you know, we have a short timeframe here that we were engaged to provide some type of analysis to respond to the developer's request that there's a need for the extension of the TIF. We're assuming that, you know, project costs have either stayed the same or have increased, and that, you know, operating revenues and expenses are the same as what was anticipated back when we first entered into the discussion of advising the city on whether there was a need for this incentive. And at that time, in conjunction with city staff, we had identified on behalf of the village that, yes, this need was there, and we're assuming that need is still in existence with respect to this project. Further analysis may be necessary to determine, you know, based on assumptions that may be more relevant today, that, you know, the incentive, you know, is likely to be still there. It may be identified, there may be other costs that need to be paid for also, but as far as that analysis, we did not update that. What we did look at is what the developer did provide as far as what the deficiency was going to be moving forward, with respect to the burden on what the special service area might have to carry, and, you know, whether that would impact the project itself. And assuming that, you know, those costs are still relevant, that, you know, all of those assumptions that we used in the original analysis, I think it's proven that there likely is a need, that the TIF needs to be extended, you know, some years to assist the project, otherwise, there's a hardship that's been reflected in the analysis. Again, you know, we'd recommend further analysis, you know, more in-depth analysis as you move forward, but want to point out, even though if you go ahead and move forward with requesting this extension, that doesn't necessarily bind this council tonight to move forward either with this developer or to even finally approve the extension of the TIF term. There's going to be more negotiation if there's amendment to the redevelopment agreement with the developer, that's going to come before the council again. As I mentioned, even if the legislature approves the extension of the TIF Act, still going to have to come back to the council to request the amendment to the redevelopment plan to provide for the extension of the additional 12 years. So this, tonight, I think it's, you know, this is an opportunity to provide some flexibility to the council as far as moving forward with this project or any future project. I don't think it binds or locks in the council to make any kind of decision whether you want to move forward with this project, but it does allow, I think, as we say, the stars are aligned, the taxing districts seems to be on board with this. You have the legislature that would consider it now. It's, you know, the opportunity is there, sometimes that window closes in the future, and it may be the city council to move forward with that. At this point, particularly, you know, we're looking at the economic issues that we're going to be addressing here in the near future, you know, it's good to keep all of those options open. But, you know, if there's any questions?
Any questions? Forwarding up?
In the analysis you've just done, and I was watching for it, you said that what you've seen right now is that there needs to be an extension of some years for this project to happen. More than five, less than seven, less than three?
I don't want to, again, until we do an in-depth analysis on that, you know, we don't, the request is, you know, four years. Does it look reasonable? Yes. But again, the typical financial consultant, we like to look at all of the numbers and then give you a good reading on what's necessary. I don't want to stand up here and tell you, well, it could be three, it could be two, or it could be five or six. It's really, until we see the full picture, it's very difficult for us to identify, but we think, we believe that there is some need for the extension. or any developer can get financing in this environment and how quickly that's going to come to fruition. So I, again, you know, it's, the risk level here of moving forward with the extension is not very great. I mean, there's still a lot of time, you know, as I said, we, you know, going to have to go through the negotiation process, whether it's with this developer or another developer. But I think the maximum flexibility you can leave yourself is beneficial.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So it may not necessarily be with this particular project, but knowing that there's legislation on to reduce the TIF time. Why are they looking at doing that instead of having these mass TIFs, these mass years of TIFs?
There's a group that has once believes that TIFs aren't as beneficial as they're made out to be, I think. You know, the movement there is really, from that standpoint, I think, I don't know if it's a, you know, the empirical evidence of the number of projects that have been developed within TIFs, you know, is great. I mean, there's a lot of them. And the amount of time that you need to put projects together, whether it's three years, four years, when, once you create a TIF, you know, the fewer number of years that you have available to actually finance anything makes projects very difficult to finance. The motivation, I'm not quite sure what all of the motivation is of some of the legislators that are pushing that. You know, we've heard discussion about 10-year TIFs or 15-year TIFs. Well, you know, as we see, you know, we, three years were burned off and it's going to be probably another two years before any project starts generating increment, you've lost five years. I mean, there's really not much left then to do that. So I think that's, I think there needs to be more discussion about that, and I think there will be over that. So I think there's just some misunderstanding there on the amount of time it takes to really put together development projects, as you're experiencing here.
I mean, could it possibly be the risk involved within? The banks are, you know, that's why it's, they're not looking for these long-term developments? Or?
No, the, no, the banks are, the banks are in the market. I mean, a lot of the financing, and as you can see, it's very difficult to do a TIF financing purely without some credit enhancement, whether it's the village issuing general obligation bonds or a much smaller amount of TIF being generated from the development that's available to provide for debt service. It's really a combination of factors. So it's really, it's not the banks that are shying away. A lot of the banks themselves don't finance the TIF increment financing itself. That's not, usually there's the public debt market, whether it's the general obligation bonds or TIF revenue bonds, which carry much higher interest rate, very higher debt service coverage, which means you can issue less bonds that are secured by that increment. So I think to maximize out, you try to, you try to issue whatever debt obligation is, the lowest interest rate, so that you can generate the most amount of proceeds.
If anything, it takes a blighted project and a bank finds it more attractive because of the variety of buckets where you can get money from.
It does. I mean, it's-
In general, banks are in favor of them.
The banks worry about what the developer's return is also. And the developer can't come in and say, well, you know, I can do this project with a 4% rate of return. The bank is going to say, no, that makes no sense. You know, if there isn't the incentive that's helping that to increase that rate of return to make that more attractive to the bank to lend, that's a positive to it. You know, I didn't, you know, banks, again, don't finance the increment itself, but they do, they are concerned about the amount of equity, the amount of, the amount of rate of return that the developer is going to return, that's very important to them, because they don't want to see a failed development, much like you don't want to see a failed development in the area. You know, a key part of our analysis also is, you know, as consultants of the village, we're concerned that this development is feasible. We're, you know, one of our analysis always is, is yes, as the developer says, they're, you know, they can, they can finance this project and put it together. But, you know, if we are not comfortable that the developer has a wherewithal or their numbers don't make sense or their financing mechanism makes sense, we'll raise the red flags on that. It's a very important, you know, it's a very key component of what our analysis also entails.
Other questions? Forwarding up?
Yeah, I'll try. Sorry, I'm not really prepared, didn't know you were-
That's all right.
-coming in. But in calculating the rate of return, how many variables go into that?
Well, you have your project costs, obviously. You have your equity, your debt, the amount of debt that the project can carry or what was believed that the, that a bank is willing to finance the project at. That's basically the project, the sources and uses cost side. The other thing is also how much incentive you need, where the differential is to make up for that. The other side of the equation is the operating revenues and expenses. Our philosophy is we usually look at a 10-year internal rate of return analysis. We'll take the, what the developer is investing, is there investment in it. We look at it both from the standpoint of a leveraged return and an unleveraged return, whether it's, we look at it as if the developer's putting 100% equity or whether it's the developer's putting 25% equity or whatever equity it is into that. And then we'll look at what the operating revenues and costs are over a 10-year period and will net present value that at the end of 10 years and assume the developer is going to sell the project at the 10th year. And from that, we'll determine what the internal rate of return is. We'll use a cap rate, what we think the current cap rate is from that standpoint and what the, and, you know, much of it is, you know, we work with numerous municipalities. We have access to a lot of information that comes into us on what other developers are getting for rates of return. So we'll compare that with what we're seeing and other, what other developers are saying compared to what the developer here would be saying to you from that standpoint. So that's pretty much the short version of-
Sure. That's a lot of variables.
Sure.
I would imagine within each one, there's a range. Have you ever gone back in all your analyses over the years and analyzed what the variance has been over time? Because a range multiplied by all those variables has got to be pretty-
Unfortunately, we don't have access to a lot of that data. Because once, you know, operating revenues and expenses aren't shared with us, once the developer, development is completed, that's something we don't have access to. Most of us in our industry, you know, we know, we hear what, you know, what developers do. You have to remember, too, there's a lot of initial risk that the developers are taking on these projects. You know, we can say, okay, wow, they hit the home run on this. But, you know, that happens. But there are times when they run into cost overruns, things like that, you know, delays and that, that you don't take into account. So you have to look at what their ultimate project budget was and then what their operating revenues and expenses were. The apartment market has been really good over these number of years, but it's slowing down now. I mean, there is more risk in there. There's a lot of concern about property taxes, things like that, you know, where the market is going. So it's, yes, have there been some that have probably exceeded what we thought? Yes. If there's some that have not because of other issues, I'm guessing it probably evens itself out somewhere along the way.
And then just, you said you calculate this with the assumption they're selling in 10 years?
Yes.
If that's the assumption, why do we need to extend the TIF?
No, that's, that's just in the real estate industry. It's just the methodology. We also use return on cost. There's a number of, and developers use their own, too.
Right. But at the end of the day, you want to make it as attractive for the banks for financing.
Exactly. Exactly. There are developers that hold for long periods of time. There are the ones that flip, you know, three years, wow, the, you know, the market is hot and, you know, we intended to keep it five or seven years, but it's time to sell. So it's, you know, it goes both ways.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And now I'd like to give an opportunity for the developer to address you.
For the record, David Patzelt, P-A-T-Z-E-L-T, 77 North First Street, Geneva, Illinois, 60134. A couple items. I'm quite pleased to hear the presentation by Zoran this evening. There's some things that were mentioned that I had previously stated to you, and it's kind of nice to hear your own consultant perhaps give you some reassurance as to what a private developer has been telling you is accurate. And most notably is the statement about financing. In the end, if we can't finance this project, the project is not going to happen, at least by this developer. And the lenders, traditional banks, are not only looking out for their own best interests, but they're also looking out for the security of the developer, able to, making sure that they're going to be able to complete the project. So I was pleased to hear that. I can say that I am fairly certain that without a TIF extension, we won't get a traditional bank to finance this project. So if that is any single point, I think that should weigh on your minds if there is any interest at all in continuing forward with this project, that we need the financing to do it and in order to obtain that, we're going to need the bank financing. Secondly, I know it was not part of the requirement or request, but after the vote of last, the committee of the whole meeting, I had made a commitment that we would start looking at trying to bring the retail back in. So we have been scrambling, trying to do that. I have some sketches and I just literally received them today. I shared them with staff and I guess I'm going to look at Scott to, you know, typically I would prefer to give something to staff, let staff digest it and before I present it to council, but if council would not like to see it or Scott, if you would like me to share it, I have paper copies to share it. Otherwise, I leave that with either the council or Scott.
By all means. I like, just saw it right before the meeting, but I think it's fair to share it with him.
The council?
Go ahead.
Absolutely.
So what you have in front of you is a, is an exhibit of the two parking levels. On the left-hand side is the lower parking level with the retail along River Street on the far left-hand side. The numbers that you see next to those, what I'll call the bullseye circle, I don't want you to interpret that as square footage. That is actually the vertical grade elevation of the floor, of the floor slab in that space. So that, in the upper left-hand corner where you see it says 676, that is, again, is a grade, horizontal grade. In comparison, if you look along State Street at the bullseye where the driveway entrance is, you'll see that there's a 685 that happens to represent what the grade is at the street there. So nothing has really changed in the retail along River Street, so that remains generally the same. Looking to the plan on the right happens to be the second level of the parking deck. And again, to give you an idea of grade, if you look at the lower right-hand corner of that plan at where Washington Street is, the curve is turning out onto Wilson Street, you'll see a grade there of 702. And then working your way west along Wilson Street, 699, 695, 692, and 689.5. Again, that's an elevation, horizontal grade as it's, the grade is falling down, down the hill towards the river. Those retail spaces you'll see, they're identified as 697 on the right, 694.5 and 692 is the retail floor space is kind of stepping down, stepping down the hill. That's, in essence, to help you understand a little bit of the challenge that we have with the slope of the hill and trying to get level or level floors within that retail So that pictorially gives you what happens on the two floor elevations. What happens to our numbers? Looking at the chart across the bottom, what I tried to insert was the printed chart that is not in red, was actually prepared by the architect and his findings. So you'll see that the retail area has a total of 14,895 square feet. Now, I caution you with that number, that this is work in progress. It's really working through by hand, trying to see what we can and can't get in the space. So if somebody likes what they see tonight and all of a sudden, a week or two weeks from now, that things change a little bit, please understand that it's work, it's work in progress. It's just, it's not cast yet in stone. So I identified that as 2020, meaning the date that we're at now in 2020. You'll see that the garage parking count, the next column to your right, has a total of 332 parking spaces. So that is what is shown on this plan. And then for comparison purposes, we entered in the garage parking count in both 2017 and 2018. So you can see in 2017, we were at 351 parking spaces and in 2018, we went to 382 parking spaces. So it turns out, we're at 332, 351, 382, just again, as comparison and parking count. The retail square footage, again, I provided you in the next two columns to the right, is the 2017 square footage of 14,590. And then in 2018, we went to 5,725. I just about did a cartwheel when I saw these numbers and said, okay, Don, Mr. Architect, how can I be more square footage than I was in 2017 in retail than I am, or I am today than I was in 2017? And we went back and forth and we're looking at it and he believes that it is accurate. So this plan, this 2020 plan, has the highest amount of retail square footage of any, of any plan. However, as I indicated to you previously, the sacrifice is going to be some of the parking. So you can see that the parking is 332 spaces down from what was at 1.351 parking spaces with that higher square footage. So there's some sacrifice there. But is, we're still at a significantly high number of parking spaces. So I think further analysis, perhaps, that staff would want to do with this number, this number of parking spaces and see how that correlates with our overall number of apartments that hasn't changed, but how that correlates with this square footage. Keep in mind that although this shows us the quantity of square footage that we can get in this space, in the building, in the retail space, still the question is out there, what is the market demand? And if there is a demand, how- And if there is a demand, how much of a demand, and what is the rental rate for this retail space? So our concern still at this point is that, yes, there is an opportunity to get more retail space in there at the cost of some of the parking spaces, but what are we going to be able to get for a rental rate? And is there going to be any need for subsidy to subsidize the leasing of that space? So I think staff and the developer need to further digest this and work on it, but I wanted you to know that my commitment was I was going to go to work on it. Some interesting facts come of it. What does it all mean? I'm sorry, I can't fully tell you what it all means, because I don't know fully what it does mean. But with that, that's our first pass at it. I think it's productive work. It was good work. If you have any questions on that plan, I will try to answer them for any of you, and if you have any other questions on the need for the TIF extension, I'll try to answer those as well.
How does it change the number of apartments?
It does not change the number of apartments. So in essence, from floors three through six remain unchanged. There was never any parking, and there was never any retail on any of those floors. So this is really changing floors one and two.
Didn't you have the apartments on?
I'm sorry. You're correct. You're 100% correct. We had four units facing Wilson Street, so our unit count is going to come down four.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Yes.
So rewinding back, I mean, I remember originally I was in support of this project because we had the retail space along Wilson and along State Street, or River Street, excuse me. And that was a big selling point for me, because, again, the goal, I think, as we've said in a couple of different conversations, was to find a way to grow the sales tax base, and so we would stop having to look at, hopefully, the property tax base. When I flipped and became against this project was because two different sources were brought in by my notes here, KMA and BDI, who said that the retail for this complex was actually going to be a financial drag on the overall project. So now we're okay bringing this back in?
Now, am I okay? I don't know that I am okay with that. But there seemed to be a request from the partners, i.e. sitting amongst the dais here, that they would like to see the retail brought back. So I made a commitment that I would try to work architecturally and structurally or spatial-wise to see if that could be done. Because if you recall, when we were at 351 parking spaces, we had this issue of diving down the parking level to get under the retail, and we had the bedrock, which was causing excessive costs. So we're not diving down with the parking, which means we're sacrificing some of the parking, but we have picked up the retail. But can we afford to build the retail, and at what rental rate will we be able to get for that retail space? And financially, it could still be a drag on the project. And it could also, do we have to come up with some incentive to get a tenant into that space? So you bring up sales tax. Sure, but is that sales tax, could that be needed to prove up that we need to get a retailer in there, that we have to subsidize back the sales tax? Those are things that I think we have to go back and work with staff, and at the same time, we're going to end up having to go back to somebody such as Zorn, who's going to have to prove up the numbers in the request. It's a little bit messy, but at least you first have to start with, does it fit? Does it fit in the bag? So I'm hoping that I'm answering your answer, that I'm trying to meet your request of, can you get the retail back in? I think we can, but at what expense, I don't know yet.
Well, and I guess that's where I'm going with this, is I'm trying to understand, because now, pardon, I'm just trying to do the different angles, the different counts that are happening here. We bumped up the number of apartments to make the project economically viable. Now we're losing four of those apartments. We had the city owning, what I had in my notes is a little different than what you have here on the document, but not off by much, a parking garage that was going to be 335 spaces, and we're losing, according to this, at least some of that parking space. We've also simultaneously extended the amount of bonds from 14 to 16 million, so we're in fact paying more or making available more, I should say, for a bit smaller garage. Yet again, but we would then now, in theory, be getting the retail space back onto Wilson. So what I'm just trying to understand is, what does this do to the ability of this project to be profitable, that we're not going to be in this same meeting six months, 12 months from now, discussing why, again, this is no longer economically viable?
My fault. I could be premature in presenting this plan, but I was trying to, in the sense of time, meet the request of my partner, the council, asking, can we get the retail back in there? I don't have a full answer, but at least I can show you that, look at these numbers. But just like I said a couple of weeks ago, it's going to come at the price of, you know, something's going to happen with the parking, and numbers are going to shuffle around. They're going to go up and down. And just because there's only so much space within the box, and what are we doing with that space in the box?
I guess this question would be for Laura. With all of this information that we received from Ken and McKenna at this afternoon, that's more information to digest, and a lot of the information that were some of the concerns, there's a lot of information to digest on this. We are also in a unique situation where we know this has been a very controversial project for this municipality, and as a result, we're not probably having people either paying attention or afraid to show up at meetings to voice their support or concerns regarding this project. This is also a lot of information to take in for the public tonight and us alone. And as was stated tonight, there are things that are, they need time to work through. Being as this is a $40 million, $50 million project, is there a compelling reason why we would not consider continuing this to our April 3rd? There's no additional cows at that point to provide some of those details and clarification, resolve them, and people that changed their mind on projects, if these numbers work out, they may go a different way. Is there a compelling reason why we wouldn't just put it off until that point, because there's nothing really happening?
Except that these other taxing bodies have prepared resolutions and/or letters of approval that are coming before their boards before that next meeting happens. So it might be persuasive to them in a negative way that the City of Batavia has not yet decided on its own resolution to extend the TIF.
But I think, to my point on that, if we had persuasive numbers that were going from a 50-50 vote to making numbers that actually do satisfy the concerns of others, it might be stronger to not limp in with a 50-50 vote, take a little more time, ask those taxing bodies to say, hold off a second because we have some additional information that is being considered.
I'd say two things to that. Doing the type of analysis that Zorn had referred to on the internal rate of return is probably, I don't want to speak out of turn for you, but a four to six-week process of analysis.
Before we discuss that, and I guess I didn't, we didn't go through the legislative process with Springfield. Any legislation, as you probably know, that has to pass with a simple majority after May 31st, it's basically the veto session, so you need a two-thirds vote after that. So it's important, I think. It's much more difficult at that point to get the legislature to agree on any type of legislation. I can't say that it can't be done, but it does become more difficult. So that May 31st date is sort of a critical date to hopefully hit, to make sure that you get into that. As far as the analysis, yeah, we can expedite some of the analysis. Again, you know, work with the developer. It's probably going to take at least two, three weeks to get some numbers, depending how many scenarios we have to run. If the city council wants to see one with additional retail versus the original, you know, we can come back with that number. So, you know, we can move that forward relatively quickly, but I think the other side of it is you have to keep in mind this May 31st date down in Springfield for getting something passed, and how long it's going to take these other taxing bodies to pass what they need to pass. So that's...
Do we think that they're going to stick with that with everything that's going on? Are they, you know, if they're shut down and they're not meeting?
At this point, you know, the best we can do is move forward, assuming that they will be, you know, and be prepared, I guess. The question is, do we miss that window if we don't? I mean, if we do, we do. If we don't, you know, that's... What happens, though, then if this project gets delayed, you know, then we're looking at potentially, you know, the next year going into the next session and waiting till May of next year to get an extension on the TIF, and how that impacts this developer, some future developer, you know, we can't guesstimate, you know, where we're going. So, yeah, unfortunately, we're all working with unknowns right now.
And I think something else that Zorn brought up in his presentation is also important to keep in mind, and that's that extending the TIF provides the city with maximum flexibility, but it doesn't mean that the city has to agree to the amended RDA. So very quickly after we make the decision of whether to approve this resolution, a next step, we'll be looking at exactly what changes we intend to make with the RDA, and that seems like a more appropriate time to engage in the analysis of the new rate of return.
Yeah, and also, don't forget that, you know, this is going to be another change to the development plan. We have an approved development plan, so we're going to have to look at that and see if that can be considered as a minor or major amendment. So if it's any type of a major amendment, it's going to have to go back to the plan, commission the public hearing process as well. So, you know, they're related, but they're separate issues, really.
I guess my feeling on this is, the last vote in the cow was to extend it by 12 years. We got a lot of time, in my opinion, that, yeah, maybe we missed this May vote in Senate and down in Springfield, but who cares if it was extended 12? Now, granted, I don't agree with extending it 12. The most I would be interested in is time lost. So if it was, hey, we start next year, and it's four years because it's time lost, the 12 bothers me beyond all belief. My son will be 50 years old. If he has kids at the same time I do, they will be out of the school. My grandkids won't even be able to take advantage of the increment that happens on this. So there's no way that I would support it anyway, but there's a chance that I would support it for a handful of years. And not throwing it in the RDA, I think if you told the other taxing bodies, hey, we're only going to do this for three or four years, then they'd be a lot more willing to accept it as well.
Is there any downside risk with the other taxing bodies if, from what I understand, this vote tonight is just to extend the TIF? We go back to the drawing, well, not back to the drawing board, but, you know, the RDA, there's still things that can occur where this project doesn't go through, yet you're using this project to sell the other taxing bodies. Is there...
The reason?
They understand the risk involved in this, that it may not occur still.
Right, and I think what they're saying is that they see the upside potential in this, that you've got a tax base of $6,600 that all of the different taxing bodies are sharing today, and that there is the potential in 20 years of the project gaining an increment of another million and a half dollars for all of the taxing bodies to share. I think it's important to look at this pending legislation as well. I'm glad that Jennifer brought that up today. And I think one of the reasons why that legislation is pending is because there have been some municipalities which have abused this as an instrument of economic development. They've taken areas where blight didn't exist, and they forced the issue and applied it to regions where it didn't really apply. But right here in the City of Batavia, we can see a couple of projects right from here where TIF was used very responsibly and for things that our community can be very proud of. One of those is North Water Street. That was our TIF number one. It was one of the dirtiest downtown industrial sites located in the City of Batavia at the time. They used it to do the environmental cleanup and build those beautiful townhomes and condominiums that are located there. And it continued to generate funding that allowed us to make investments on Houston Street as well as North River Street that allowed us to attract development of a $40 million project. The other area where TIF was used appropriately, not by the City of Batavia, but the City of Batavia was the benefactor, is the Chicago Premium Outlets. The Chicago Premium Outlets, while they're located in the City of Aurora, they are located within the boundaries of the Batavia School District. And for such a large project, I think if you asked our school district, they had no problems waiting 23 years to be able to collect the increment that is being generated on that property. So we wouldn't be asking for the extension if we weren't a firm believer that this project offers a tremendous amount of economic incentive and relief for other taxpayers, property taxpayers in our community by creating new property taxpayers to share the burden of those costs. But in addition to that, perhaps add to our retail space in our downtown to generate those types of revenues that are non-property tax as well. I think we've got a very nice burden hand in this project, and I hope sincerely that it gets built for the benefit of all Batavians. But if it doesn't, having the 12-year extension puts the city in the best possible position to have as similar of an income-generating, revenue-generating project as possible for not only the City of Batavia, but for all of the other taxing bodies. And as I noted in my memo, I know the concern is, why keep that increment away from other taxing bodies longer than necessary? And that's why in my memo, I suggested entering into intergovernmental agreements with the other taxing bodies, that once the bonds are paid off, and the, as well as the other costs associated with the project, why wouldn't we want to be able to recoup the city's investment in this? The city made an investment in this development, in this project, for everybody. You know, just as Zorn was talking about, the developer put some money in upfront that they may never recoup. We did that too, to the tune of about $2 million when you include what we'll spend on the environmental remediation. This extension allows us the opportunity to be able to recoup those costs. But I would strongly suggest an intergovernmental agreement to say, we'll end it once those costs have been paid. I think it's a good thing to do.
I'm glad you brought that up, Laura, because that's one of the ways, and one of the only ways that I want to vote for this extension, is making the commitment here and now that when we do this, or if we do this, that the TIF, we end the TIF the day we're paid back. The day the bonds are paid off and the city's paid back, we end the TIF. And that way, from that day, whether it's three years after the end of it, making up the time that we've lost already, or whether it takes six years or 10 years, or whatever that number is, when that's ended, we enact whatever we have to. we enact whatever we have to to approve this. So that way, when none of us are sitting at this table as councilmen, that gets done so that we were assured that whatever, you know, time is remaining on it does not just generate more TIF money. Because I want to see it go back to the other taxing districts, I think just as much as everybody else does. But if we don't do this, if we don't extend it now and get the project going, we're not going to have that chance or that choice to be able to have that windfall come to the other taxing districts. I mean, I've had to explain this time and time again to people that the only reason that there is money available to pay those bonds or do this is because of this project. And any project that we have beyond this, I can almost guarantee you is not going to be of this size, is not going to be of this density, and is not going to generate the tax money that this will. So that's why all along I felt like the size and the scope of this project is really the catalyst to start other areas around it. I wasn't as concerned as some people about losing the retail along here because I think of possibilities for properties within a block of this that are all to me much more suited for retail than the hill. I mean, I've lived in this town since 1972. And every year or every couple of years, the shops or the businesses along the hills have changed, have moved from retail to retail to service to retail, whatever they've been. But that's always been the hardest place to handle because, one, the community has always been oriented towards being able to park in front of where they want to work. I know that that's not what we are dealing with today, but that's the reality of what people still think. And when they can't park in front of the business they want to walk into, they don't want to go into it. So that makes it really difficult for retailer or a service shop or anything else to be on those hills in downtown. And the fact that we have one bridge that all the traffic goes across, people don't like to deal with the traffic on Wilson Street and park in front of a business when they have to back in to a parallel parking space. So that's always been a detractor. That's why I have never been as worried about the retail, especially along the Wilson Street frontage on this because there's plenty of other places for that within a block or two of where this is being built. I just want to see the density and the amount of people living within that area of downtown, I think is going to be a huge change for this downtown and I think the catalyst to start other places. So that's why I'm okay with extending it. I agree with Mark. We have to have some kind of sunset or some kind of agreement that when we get paid off, it's done. And that's when the TIF stops.
Quick question. Have we ever talked about when we were paying off the bonds and the money owed to us? Are we paid incrementally or are we at the tail end?
I believe we had already talked, always talked about it at the end.
We're at the end.
That after the, the bonds were, the bonds were first. Bonds were always first, no matter if they were 14 or 16 million. That was always first. And then if there was money left over, originally, I think in the first RDA, we were going to share that to recoup our costs and to provide an incentive incentive to the developer. So I think then at the second RDA, I think that end game kind of went away. Unless we got really lucky and the market value rose to the point where created enough increment, there would be more than, now that we see that that's probably not ever going to happen. Extending it gives us the only possibility to get that money back.
And I just want to mention that $9 million of that bond issue is for our public parking garage as well.
There's also a streetscape involved that we're also paying for for the city. Is that correct?
It comes out of the TIF fund.
Right.
I just wanted to make one comment. And Alderman Siron last week, in fact, asked the question, or actually made the statement that he asked, are we better off today than we were four years ago in terms of the value of our property? And I think the answer was clearly yes. We've made it more shovel ready, if you will. We know the mysteries that we didn't know then in terms of the cost of excavating the bedrock, the ecological or I should say environmental remediation problems and also an improved plan. And we did the demo work, so it really is ready to go. So I would suggest that it is more valuable now than it was. But with the extension of the TIF, in my opinion, market wise, it becomes even more valuable. Scott and I and Laura have met with a number of developers over, especially over the last couple of years on the Larson Becker property, the property on Water Street, the property on Shumway. And the question always comes up, if they want to subsidy, how much time is left on these TIFs? Because they realize that the reason the 23 period, I think we've talked about this, it's not some mystery date. It has to do with a 20-year bond issue. And that if you get the bond issue in place, say it takes three years for the property to be developed, now you start gaining increment, now you've got an increment to pay back the bond, 20 years, right? So that 23 years is not an arbitrary number, it's an important number. If we're going to be able to issue bonds in order to incentivize the project and help finance it. So in my opinion, I think Zoran mentioned it, is that there's value in the extension in and of itself. If you don't like the project, if you don't like the developer, if you don't like me, whatever, my point is, the property, the city, it would be who the city to extend the TIF. And I agree, I think that's a good compromise. There is no compelling law in state statute that says you have to agree with the other districts to expire the TIF in advance of the 12 years. I think it's laudatory that this council is willing to commit to that, at least at this juncture, as part of the reason to extend it, because I know that would be well received. But bottom line is, that's under current law. We don't know what the law will be. The law very well could be changed, that TIF can't be more than 10 years with one five-year extension. That's on the agenda. I know every year, somebody in the legislature wants to amend the TIF. That's how it always is in the statute. But the fact is, the law is what the law is, and the law can't change till July 1st at the earliest. So my view is it's critically important for the city's position in the market for redevelopment opportunities to get the extension. Because we've lost several years on this project. It won't pay itself back under increment. If you don't get the extension, you're going to burden the developer with that additional equity. Someone's got to make that 3.6 million up or whatever it ends up being. And that's going to be on the SSA, which means it's on the developer, which means that comes right out. And we haven't done the analysis and Zorn and I talked on the phone today, we all did. But it's intuitive, if nothing else. If you add more costs on the developer, whether it's his taxes through the increment or his taxes through the SSA, those are costs that go into the project. Under, you know, sources, uses and cost analysis, that will reduce his return on the investment. And the last thing I'll say, just knowing Shodin, like I think I do, there's still a lot of dough to be spent on this project before he breaks ground. And one of which is the building plans have to be developed. Those could be a half a million dollars to do the final engineering, the building plans. I don't think they're going to undertake those costs until we know that the extension is given. That pushes it back again. If we wait till however long it takes to wait, we keep losing an opportunity to break ground on this. So I just think that it's important for the council to realize, maybe the project is exactly what you want. And for some of you, it never has been, and I get that. And I know, and I grant Alderman Callahan, that it's a very controversial project. But, you know, redevelopments are never easy and they take tough decisions that can be under controversial conditions. And I think this council has gone 95 yards to the goal and just five more yards. It just, I, to me, it would be, it would be disappointing and I think a real lost opportunity not to extend this TIF. Because if you don't extend the TIF, this developer cannot build that project. If you do extend the TIF, a project like this of this magnitude can be built, whether it's by this developer or somebody else. Without the extension, no one's going to build a 40, 50 million dollar project if they can't get the financing to make it work.
Yeah, I was a no vote when we lost two, almost two thirds of the retail. And the, we had to sell, sell $2 million more bonds. I like the idea of bringing retail back, but that's just a possibility. There's no guarantee with that. The idea of, and I'm with Marty, why, I feel really rushed here. I think this is an important project. I do want to see a development happen there. I think it's important for us to revitalize downtown, definitely. I'm on board with that. The process is going through here and how this is dragging on, all of a sudden, it's, we have to do this right now after all this time has passed. And we're looking at putting a lot more time on the end. 12 years, I agree with you, Mark, I'm really uncomfortable with that idea. But Alan, I think I would be on board with it if if we can all agree and put something in place that as soon as everything's paid off, it's done. Now, I'm assuming now, now we're talking the timeline of the state legislature, that the session is ends and it probably will end since it's all one party now that, at the end of May. The surely Senator DeWitt has a shell bill in mind if he's willing to do this. The, and the track record on TIFs getting extended, I believe, in the legislature is pretty solid, that they pretty much approve them. So I don't, and selling it to other taxing bodies, if we're asking to extend it for 12 more years, but there's no guarantee of a project in place right now, I think it's an easier sell to them when we say, hey, look, we've solidified a new agreement and this project's really going to happen.
I think getting to that.
So that that timeline, I think, you know, it's not unrealistic to say that, hey, let's slow down here. Let's see if this can actually be done, because this could, this could change me. I could, I could, I could support that if it is, can become a reality. But what, from what I'm hearing, and I appreciate the work that you've done and going back and looking at it, that would, that would help take some of the bitterness away when the first, the first, or the second redevelopment agreement had to happen, which I was opposed to because, for the reasons I had said.
What is the risk of having the extension in place and then negotiating the new RDA and the rate of return, having the time to do that? The, the risk in negotiating the composition of the project, both times that we did that took months. So two months from now is too late to sell it to the other taxing bodies and have the legislation pass. But passing the resolution, getting the extension from the legislature buys us the time to be able to do exactly what you're saying.
So I agree with Alan. You know, I'm a supporter of extending the TIF. And I think we're all in agreement, not to speak for everyone at the council table, but I think we're all in agreement that once the city is made whole, we will sunset that TIF. If we need to codify it somehow, we'll do so. But no one wants to continue it when we're made whole. I mean, if it were to continue on anyway, all that money in the TIF, I believe, would still have to go back to the taxing bodies if we didn't spend it anyway. So it's their money, once we're done using it. And so if it's three years, four years, we're done, we just open it up to the taxing bodies, we sunset that TIF. I think that's the way to do it. We're all in agreement, it's been said a number of times last week and this week. I think, I want to thank Dave, you know, for two weeks, you're coming through with an idea. You know, we're working as a partner and I appreciate that. I think this is an important project. I support this project. This is a $50 million investment in our downtown. We've been saying it, it started four years ago, we've been talking about this. It was a game changer for our city then, it's a game changer for our city today. It's, and I understand the retail and that it went, now we're trying to bring it back. I get, I get that retail is important. I mean, Randall Road, we've, the mayor over the course of many years has protected Randall Road for retail generation, generating income. This here is going to be an economic engine for our downtown. I mean, this is going to, this is going to anchor our downtown. I think that's important. I think that's something we should all consider. And if this, if some reason the developer takes an exit ramp, we still have time to come up with something else. I don't see him, we spoke last week, he's committed to the project. I'm committed to the project, we're partners in this, the city and the developer. I think it's something we should, we should embrace. As far as being rushed, I understand the newer council members, we've been doing this for four years though, but I get it, I mean, there's an awful lot to wrap your head around. I mean, there's a ton of material and information and it's changing. And I definitely sympathize with you guys. And I talked with some of you and you're just trying to wrap your head around it. I mean, I guess, you know, ask, ask questions of myself, Alan, Dan, Laura, the mayor. The information's there and it's important. But I think we need to continue, we need to get this thing done. If we, I think it's important, again, that we put a shovel in the ground 2020. I mean, if we wait to 2021, costs are going up. Then we're going to be at the table again because cost, labor goes up, material goes up. That's construction. And so we got to get the shovel in the ground now. We got to get the developer signed, get a shovel in the ground. It's on him to complete the project. Let's get this done.
I've got a bunch of questions. As you remember, I mentioned last week that I was ready to move to send this back to committee. And what I'm hearing tonight solidifies that in my mind. And Alderman O'Ryan, you just mentioned it, we've got a lot to get our heads around. We don't want to feel rushed. This was just given to us an hour ago, and we've got to get our heads around it and not feel rushed. That's not a vote tonight. You talked about we need to get some things codified. There have been a lot of things that people have said tonight that would turn them into a yes vote on this. And we would send a solid signal to the other taxing bodies a month from now with a 14-0 vote rather than a 7-7 tie or an 8-6 or 8-5, do the math. I'm stuck on it. Yeah.
You delivered 14 votes, that's impressive. Just saying.
Of course, if we're voting in April, then they're probably voting on it in May and the legislature may not be there. And then you're in the veto session where it would require the two thirds.
There are some things that, that some different people have brought up tonight that sounds, to me, it signals they would be on board if, and there's a bunch of little pieces that have been put in. Do those show up in TIF legislation or do those show up in a re-re-restated RDA? Because it makes a difference. And why I say it makes a difference is two recent activities that this council's had to deal with. One is the NAGL SSA, that everything had happened, we thought everything was done and it didn't. It didn't happen right, and now it fell apart. And the second one was this bike rental agreement that you yourself said it seemed rushed. And once it was signed and returned to us, it was like, oh, wait a minute. We talked about, and the mayor asked about liability, insurance and indemnification. We were told it was going to be there. Once we got the signed agreement back, it wasn't in there. I've got concerns.
That's incorrect. We don't have a signed agreement. We were given a draft agreement for us to review and for me to offer to you for approval. And I said the things that we expected to be in there were not in there. So I would compare that to the redevelopment agreement. And yes, many of the things that people have spoken about today are things that can be negotiated and made part of the redevelopment agreement. But we won't really have reason to do a redevelopment agreement if the TIF does not get extended.
Did we, did we establish this TIF before a developer came to us with a project idea?
No.
So the development came first and then the TIF?
Correct. And that's the right way to do that because it takes about three years to build a project and a 20-year bond.
Wouldn't we have a re-re-restated redevelopment agreement in place before we agree to extend the TIF?
No.
And if, why not? The development agreement, the development came before the TIF, why wouldn't a redevelopment, a restated come before redoing something with the TIF?
Because we do have an existing project. And so what we're talking about here is the ability to continue with the project that exists today. I mean, this, this still exists. Without the extension, it doesn't exist. And so if we do not take this step of the extension, then we're going to be talking about a very different looking project. I dare say that it will not have 15,000 square feet of retail, 332 public parking spaces and how many apartments are now? 192, somewhere around 192. You won't have a project that looks like that without extending the TIF. And you have, once you extend the TIF, you've bought yourself the time to do that process as slow as you want to.
And that process could go as slow as we want to and eat into the amount of time another developer might need. another developer might need for a different project. Because we've then we've then eliminated all of the up against the wall for any negotiations that are going on.
Right. Except that the other taxing bodies want to see that you have an existing project. So if we go to them and we say, not this project, um, would you just extend it? I'm thinking the answer is going to be no.
Would an RDA negotiation be much shorter when both parties knew that they were up against the time crunch by not having that fallback position of the TIFs already there? Would we might get something where both parties agreed to in a shorter fashion if we didn't have the luxury of twelve years to drag it out? Same with any negotiations that are going on between the developer and IDOT, which were mentioned in the last meeting, was that those could be another potential delay. By adding onto the TIF, we've just changed the dynamic of somebody else's negotiation. One party might say, I've got to get this negotiated. I'm up against the wall on getting financing and and being able to repay within that TIF time period. And the other one's saying, I know you're up against the wall. We extend the TIF. We've just shifted that completely around, and we've inserted the city into somebody else's negotiations by changing it to where the other one is now, how long do you want to keep fighting me on this? I've got twelve extra years. There's some dynamics that change there. And those are some of the things that I that I'm, that were part of the questions. And the reason I'm willing to send this back to committee to discuss some of this.
And we can continue to debate it for months, but a window is closing. So um, what what you will be debating once um, the general assembly is no longer in session would be what size project now that now that a forty million dollar project is off the table? What size project could we reasonably expect from the time period that's left? Because you've got the pending legislation that could be enacted and uh become effective as of July first. You've got uh the fact that the TIF not might not be extended in the veto session because of the additional votes that are required. So you've really put significant risk that a project of this magnitude will not be built.
Alderman Chansett?
First of all, is where did Dave go? I think he's blocked by the podium. I was listening to you as I was driving to the airport after the last meeting. I'm pleasantly surprised you came back so quickly with um something that shows some retail in it. I I will arm wrestle you on this one. Um, I see a place where the uh acai bowl place can go, where a pet boutique can go, where a nice granola place can go. There will be no subsidies. There will be no need for subsidies. They're literally a half block away, ten businesses that hopefully will grow because of the amazing business plans. They'll move right into this project. So that's, don't waste any time doing your RDA discussions on that. Uh, Laura, I can walk and chew gum at the same time, and I know the staff can do this. So I don't see why we can't move forward the TIF extension and send back all these myriad of issues that we we clearly still have. Let's send those issues back to committee. We can talk about those issues and the RDA renegotiation. We can do that literally for the next six months if we want to, probably on a party line because we won't be in this council chambers because of coronavirus. Uh, but we can at least move the extension forward so we can keep the clock running on that. I don't see a problem with that.
That's my recommendation. Move the extension forward. And you could even put a timeline on the period by which you want that um new restatement of the redevelopment agreement in place. And we can, we can target that time period.
I was trying to craft a motion to get as many yes votes as I could tonight. What I was hoping the consensus would be is that we would extend the TIF, work with the other taxing bodies on an intergovernmental agreement with the understanding that we are sunsetting the TIF. Um, uh, once everybody gets paid back and direct staff to work with Shodin on plans, whether or not they include retail, um, and arrive at a revised RDA. Am I missing any points to get us to fourteen tonight? Because I I want to get to as many as yeses as we can. What else do we need to talk about?
Drew first.
Please.
No, you you covered essentially what I was gonna say is we split these into two separate things. The negotiate the RDA and extend the TIF. And extending the TIF is, to me, as much about protecting the city and setting us up for the long term, whatever may come, than it is the RDA and the project specifically. Without extending it, we're we're putting our, we're putting ourselves really behind the eight ball. And I feel it's my duty to look out for, you know, Gary's, I saw him lurking around the back. He's always taking the, talking about having to take like the fifty or hundred year view as an engineer when he's looking at all these kind of things. And to me, having this TIF in place sets us up with that fifty and hundred year view to be able to do the most good with that TIF, no matter whether it's this project or another one.
What else would you like to talk about in committee?
Um, I I think.
Because I know that's separate, but did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so. I I think you've covered it, what we need to talk about.
Alderman Rosado?
Yeah, and I agree with you, Dan. I think we put a timeline on this. Say we were gonna, we want to negotiate for another year. And if at at the end of a year or a certain time period, we call it quits with this developer and go for something else. But at least we have the opportunity with an extended TIF.
Do you want to shovel in the ground in one year?
Yeah. Because what if somebody comes back and says, I'll build a five million dollar project? I don't even think we would do something like that.
That's fair.
Alderman Rur?
Um, you get a yes out of me if we max it at five years, period. And that's time loss plus two years. And that doesn't involve that. It puts it, it puts pressure on that it can't be dragged out. Because the more it drags out, the lesser opportunity to not have an SSA tacked on to cover any losses. That way it's it's done and then you have a yes for me.
Do you think, do you think five years is enough?
Five years is the max.
Would you be, would you be okay if it spilled into six?
Why? We've, we've only, we've only lost three.
We have a record here. I want to set the expectation. It's gonna be six. I don't want to lie to you when I ask for your vote. That's all I'm saying.
The only reason why I'm concerned with that and Mark, I think, looking at this project, that's very reasonable. But should this project go away, I think what Chris Aston said is very important, that the amount of time left on the TIF is something of value to attract a different developer to build the largest project that they possibly can or that of the maximum value. And so I think it's enough that we put in there the sunset that once the bonds are paid off and our costs are recouped, um, that that would be the time period at which it ends.
Could you not extend it another seven years? If we only went five, could you extend it another seven?
It would be hard to say what um the legislature will do between now and then. And so what I'm trying to do today is put the city of Batavia in the absolute best position possible, whether we build this project or whether we need to seek an alternative. So the best thing that we can do in that regard is go for the twelve years with the intergovernmental agreement.
Alderman Jerome?
Yeah, I just wanted to add and and point out, we are only talking tonight about extending the TIF. I I'm for it, especially under these circumstances um with coronavirus. We don't know what legislation is, when they're gonna be in. I mean, we could actually get stuff done. Um, in the meantime, while while we're not convening, um, which we won't be able to, I don't think, for a while, but it gives us flexibility. I would vote yes. I would support this tonight with knowing that it's just that we have a lot of work to do on this RDA. Um, and there's some terms that I am still a part on. And I'll make that clear. But I would support extending this to give us as much flexibility going into these uncertain times as possible.
Anybody? Alderman Chansett?
Anybody? Did I miss anything from anyone tonight? I just want to be a hundred percent clear. I would really like.
Yeah. All I was gonna say is that, you know, and I hate to say it like this, but you know, time is of the essence with this. I mean, even if we went with a shorter timeframe than twelve years, there's no guarantee that the legislature is going to allow that. But you also have the power in the TIF to end it. Once we've paid the bonds, you can end it anytime. You know, if you decide, you know what, we're we're not gonna pay ourselves back or whatever, you know, we say we still have two million dollars. You can say, you know what, forget it. We're just gonna eat it and let the school districts and everybody else get their money back and everything else. You can do that at any time as soon as the bonds are paid off.
I think we're all on the same page. We're not committing anything tonight on that. We're extending twelve years, but.
It's all we're doing.
Our desire is to make.
Twelve years, that's what it says.
Right in the.
Right. Okay. Anybody else?
I guess I would like to make a motion then that we approve Resolution twenty dash forty-three dash R authorizing the extension of the city of Batavia, Washington Wilson Tax Increment Finance District with the understanding that staff will be working with the other taxing bodies to explain, uh, one, to get an intergovernmental agreement, to explain that we are seeking a sunset and that we're looking forward to um a parallel negotiation of of the RDA, which we will discuss at committee.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, Alderman Chansett, second, Alderman O'Brien, for the extension of the uh Washington, One Washington Place Tax Increment Financing District. Any further discussion? Or call the roll?
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Uwer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
and Knop?
No.
Nine to five.
Motion approved. I I just want to make the the comment to the council. I I was very pleased with the discussion you guys did tonight. I think it was very informative for people who maybe watching on TV in the community. I think all the questions that have been raised were raised by you tonight. And I I really appreciate that we took almost an hour and ten minutes to have this discussion because this is a very important subject in the community. I would just want to offer just a brief story. Uh, I have the opportunity to get to know a lot of mayors in the region because I've been a mayor so long and I I've befriended over the years two different mayors. Neither one of them is now still in office, but one was the mayor of Elmhurst and the other one was the mayor of Downers Grove. And when this One Washington project came up, there was a lot of people out in the audience and through the plan commission at the council meetings that said, oh, boy, this is gonna be the ruination of downtown Batavia, et cetera, et cetera. And in both cases, on different times, this former mayor of Elmhurst and the former mayor of of Downers Grove said to me, Jeff, I see you're going through the same experience I had. And I said, oh, I am. And he said, yeah, we've been reading in whatever paper your your battles about bringing resident, a high end residential unit into your downtown. And first, the mayor of Elmhurst says to me, you know, it was highly controversial when we did it in Downers and Elmhurst. But he says, when it was over with, the first thing that happened was we got all this new retail in downtown, down downtown Elmhurst because people liked the idea suddenly there's a whole bunch of new residents moving in. And then secondly, uh, the next thing we found out was is that in Elmhurst, we didn't have much land to annex. We're almost right, we're backed right up to our neighbors in every direction we go. So we we couldn't bring in any new subdivisions where we build a bunch of new houses. But suddenly we put this thing on the tax rolls after we got it kind of all paid off. And suddenly here was this big windfall of profit going to the local school district because they hadn't seen any massive new amounts of retail residential growth. And suddenly we brought it in here with our development in downtown Elmhurst. So he says, every time I go by that building, I say to myself, well, I got the battle scars, but the community ended up getting the benefit. And he says, now nobody ever even remembers the battle we had. And I virtually had the same story with the mayor of Downers Grove, and his is more recent than the Elmhurst one, but the same thing is that he says it's it's brought some really stability to new business moving into downtown Downers Grove. And he says, I've got a bunch of residents in our town that say, well, I'm getting old, my kids are moving out. And I think I'd like to move into one of these nice units and live walking distance to downtown and and be able to lock my door for two months and go to Florida and come back and come back in. And he says, it's it's had nothing at the end of the day but positive benefits, but there sure was a lot of political battle scars created by it. And so I sit here today and I look at what's happening on the East Wilson Street Hill. There's new retail moving in. And it sounds like Mr. Patzl's gonna try to get us some more up there to join the gang that's already there. And I have residents in this town telling me, well, Jeff, I hope you build this thing because I really am very interested in in moving into it. And so I think we got that. And at the end of the day, I think when this is all paid off is thanks to the conversation from this side of the room, the idea that we're gonna offer as quickly as we can the tax revenues to the local school district will be something that will probably be by that time, we won't have a lot of new ability to build a lot of new houses or stuff in the community. So the school district, I think, will welcome the increased EAV and the taxes that'll come from this. So I think we did do something tonight while there's a lot of battle scars on hanging on all of us from it. A few years down the road, I think people will appreciate what was done. And so I think our conversations here and the depth of it was quite commendable by all of you. And on behalf of the community, I thank you for the conversation you did tonight and and the debate. Because I think both sides did a great and honorable diplomatic job of bringing out all the fine points that needed to be said. And I think there's a message loud and clear there that we need to get this thing tied up and get all the fine points of it nailed down. And we need to get the building underway. Your honor. I say that for Mr. Patzl's benefit in the audience.
Your honor, I'd just add as as a, I used to be a resident of Elmhurst and was living there when the discussions for that to go up. And there there were some great discussions about it, but I still have friends and family who live there. And I can tell you, there is nobody in town who's complaining about what's happened to the downtown now that that's gone in and they've seen what the results are.
May I just say to Dave, thank you for coming back tonight. At least you've you've listened to the council and you've proven that you've listened to the council coming back with at least bringing retail into drawing, you know, it's just preliminary. Hopefully it happens and hopefully we can all come to terms. Because I think, you know, we're partners in this, as you say, and and we should continue to work together, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item number twelve, which is Resolution twenty dash zero four two dash R authorizing execution of task force order number nineteen with Engineering Enterprises for professional services related to the AWIA mandated water work system risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan for a fixed fee of seventy thousand forty-seven dollars and no cents. Who's got this one?
That's me, your honor. So in essence, your honor, this is uh, we're federally mandated by the federal government, obviously, uh, to uh initiate a water work system risk and resilience resilience assessment. And then six months after that, we'll have to come up with an emergency response plan. This has been budgeted uh for the two years for twenty twenty forty, thirty thousand dollars approximately and for twenty twenty one forty thousand dollars. Uh, and it just gives a list. It's just uh, you know, protecting our water supply and our infrastructure and just coming up with whatever risks that might be out there and how we plan to address it. I just, we we all agreed on it at the Cal meeting. Uh, it passed unanimously. We just thought we would bring it up just for purposes of television and let the uh city of Batavia know what's going on.
Any comments on it? Want to make a motion?
I make a motion. We uh passed Resolution twenty dash forty-two dash R authorizing execution of task order number nineteen with Engineering Enterprises for professional services related to an AWIA mandated water work system risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan for a fixed fee of seventy thousand forty-seven dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by who? Oh, Alderman Meitzler for the approval of Resolution twenty dash forty-two dash R. Any further discussion? Or call the roll?
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
and Baron?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution twenty dash forty zero four two dash R is approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no, no's, and none absent. Moving to item number thirteen, which is Resolution twenty dash zero forty-six dash R approving a change order, number one, for MP Systems in the amount of forty thousand two hundred, uh, twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents to complete substation construction services for the Northeast Distribution Substation. Alderman O'Brien.
Your honor, this was a change order. It was uh for not to exceed number and then came with this change order. And uh, I think a number of us have gone through the the memo and just had some questions. Uh, there was a vote, there was one nay vote to it. And and just had some questions, there was a vote, there was one nay vote to it, and I just, there were just some questions, I guess there's still some outstanding questions. Alderman Callahan was, excuse me, Alderman Callahan was the nay vote, and so, I'll leave it to Alderman Callahan to ask his question.
Oh, it wasn't a question, I believe you brought up the concern, which was, this was a not to exceed, they spent 240-some hours in excess where it wasn't caught, and now, the city is spending $40,023.95 because there was not good project questioning as it went along, or by the party that we did have a contract with, with not to exceed, they didn't notify us to let us know at 60 hours in, 24 hours in, you know, so when you brought that up, being as it's your line of business, that swayed my vote to a no, because in these days, especially of, who knows where we're going to be pinching dollars from? I know the question that was said was, well, what does that send out to somebody if they don't get paid for work? Well, what does it say if we put out not to exceed contracts, but it can be exceeded? That's another perception that could be gained when we're thinking about whether or not these things should be paid. I voted no to say, as a message, no, I mean, we need to send a message to, we have not to exceed, or if we have things that are going on. I fully get that there will be times where it will be exceeded, but through good communication and planning, notification early, we can make those decisions in a much earlier spot.
Well, you know what, I'll, I guess I'll tackle that a bit, and I appreciate what Alderman Callahan is saying, it was a not to exceed number, and there was a change order, and the change order in question was de-watering the site, and it was 240 hours. And so, Rahat was presenting it to us, and he didn't have a very good answer regarding why it was 240 hours to de-water an excavation, and he told us that it was originally submitted 480 hours, and that they argued with the contractor and discussed with the contractor, and he knocked it down to 240. In construction, being in construction, that to me immediately is a red flag, but, so I recommend that perhaps we should, in other contracts, you know, have allowances, and if they're going to far exceed whatever the allowance was, to maybe, as Alderman Callahan says, bring attention, or bring it to someone's attention at the city, at Public Works, or whoever overseeing it, that at least they're aware of it, so they can address it at that time. It was asked, you know, there's someone on site, you know, a resident engineer on site, you know, watching it and doing counts and tracking hours, and Rahat says, "Not all the time," so maybe that was a potential issue involved. So, you know, the city staff has agreed to it with the contractor, so I guess we can call city staff in before we pay this and have them negotiate it down further, or we pay it and just, you know, have a conversation with staff that they just tighten up the contracts. Alderman Callahan.
Thank you. Your Honor, last week at the committee of the hold, there were two things that I said that I should have stuck my ground on a little bit more. Number one, it's a change order, it's not an assumed we will approve it, there's a reason has to come before the council for approval. And number two, it's $40,000, and every year, we get to the budget, and we always say that, you know, we shouldn't scoff at 40 grand here, 10 grand there, along the way. And I realize it's not the general fund, but I'm also wary of anything that is coming from the electric utility, because that's a sore point in town as well. I was thinking more, though, this past week, just in general project management, and in my line of work where software is concerned, we have similar statements of work for X amount of hours until certain deliverables are achieved, there's KPIs along the way, and bad project management is not automatically compensated, it just isn't. Change requests have to come in beforehand, there's project checkpoints along the way to know if you are running over budget, running past milestones, so I'm going to change my vote, my vote to a no on this one, because I think it does need to set the precedent that change orders are not a given. It's 40 grand this time, what's the next one?
Well, and if I may, just for clarity's sake, I understand that someone had to have approved the de-watering. I mean, someone had, if, and I'm just, I'm not defending any of it, I'm just trying to get for clarity's benefit, someone comes in and says, "Hey, you need to de-water the site, okay, that's a change order, since it wasn't a line item in the contract, okay, we'll pay you, what's the hourly rate, the hourly rate is such and such, we need this water gone, we'll get rid of it for you." Someone had to approve it at that time, the hours, not so much, but, so, you know, if it's in excess of the contract, because maybe there was a miss on the contract.
I was just going to say that I recall at the meeting when Rahat was asked about what hours did our construction supervisor actually observe the de-watering happening, and it was in excess of 180 hours, so that when they, that is one of the bases for why they negotiated that down. It's not necessarily to say that the contractor said, "Oh, you caught me, I wasn't doing the de-watering all of the rest of that time." They're saying, "Well, if, on this whole contract that we have over the course of more than two years, we're willing to cut our hours down to just what the supervisor observed, that's fine, the rest of the contract is of such a significant amount that we're not going to give a good customer a hard time about that."
This is clarity, when I went back and looked at this after we discussed it at the last meeting, the contract stated there was a not to exceed money, dollar amount for the contract, but in the contract, the de-watering was not given a dollar value, it was time and material that was listed on there, and that's, I think, the reason why this, in my mind, doesn't fall under the same things as, you said you were going to do a job for $2 million for us, not to exceed that, and everything that was listed on there, if there was a change order, there would have to be reasons why, when that's a time and material portion of a job, there's a reason they don't put a number on that, because of time and material, and you don't know what's going to be involved in that. And when we looked at the total scope of the job and the de-watering that was there, I'm not going to argue whether they were right or wrong for what they wanted to charge or what they actually did, because they didn't have a camera on there watching, and so we can't review and see what was reality. I look at the amount of time that they were there on those, on that site, and that does not seem, over that period of time, for the timeframe of the job, that that's unreasonable. And we agreed to a contract that had an open line in it, and maybe that's something we need to learn from, and maybe that's something we need to think about going forward, but I think we agreed to that contract, and I think we should pay it.
Alderman Chansett.
I'm curious, what are the implications of us tabling this, are we going to get ourselves sued, or are we going to lose an otherwise good relationship with a good contractor?
Gary, do you be able to respond to that?
I don't know that I can speak for the contractor's intentions, you know, he either would want to make a case out of it, literally in the legal sense, or he'd walk away from the money, and I don't know if this is enough for him to walk away from, or enough for him to pick up and call his lawyer.
In your professional opinion, should we be paying this bill?
Yeah, and I wasn't at last week's Cal meeting, so I apologize for not.
I was on pina coladas at the time, so I couldn't.
During any of this discussion.
In your professional opinion, should we pay the bill?
I, just give me one second, there's a couple of points that I guess I want to jump in and clarify, this isn't a professional services contract, this is a construction contract, and although its term does not to exceed, maybe that's not good verbiage. If it was an engineering contract, in which case we had a set design and professional services, that not to exceed is probably more literal in the sense. As Alderman Wolf probably most aptly pointed out, when we award contracts in the construction side, especially contracts with T&amp;M line items, the not to exceed item still has openings to it should unforeseen circumstances arise. If we had done this project in 2012 in the middle of the drought, that not to exceed, or that T&amp;M item for de-watering would have been zero, so we, you just don't know, it all depends on the weather conditions when you're going into the contract. Building projects typically have allowances, and sometimes on civil projects, we do unit prices, but it's hard for them to give a unit price for something they don't know how much of they're going to have. Again, a building is four walls, and you're going to know, you know you're not going to have, you know, go from 10,000 square feet of carpet to 100,000 square feet of carpet, you're within those four walls, whereas de-watering, you know, we all could take a guess at the beginning of the project that we'd have one day of de-watering or 100 days of de-watering, no one really knows. So, that's why sometimes in civil projects, we don't set allowances. Anyways, should we be paying them? Yes, I was in several discussions that occurred with our consultant engineer and our contractor related to these items, and I think this is a reasonable end to the negotiation.
Alderman Callahan.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that, at the meeting last week, I do, it's your line of business, and that's why when you brought up the concerns about it, I appreciated that, I weighed those, I believe you asked questions surrounding it, I don't think the, as we had gotten some of the answers, I know that they still presented concerns for you that, why wasn't this caught? I fully understand that there are times where this could have gone over, but I think, to Alderman O'Brien's point, what he was saying is, why wasn't it, as it was going along, in the project management side of it, why weren't we being notified that, oh, we're hitting a lot of water this year, we're hitting a lot of water this year, so that you can start anticipating and make those arrangements, instead of, which I believe was the initial concern, waiting for a bill at the end of the time? That, I believe, is the things that were stated as a concern, and I appreciate those things, and based on what we were told at the Cal meeting, it was, it happened.
Sorry, that just reminded me of the one last point I wanted to bring up that I forgot in my verbal speech. This isn't the first and only change order, our council approved a contract with a contingency amount, so we've had change orders that have all fallen within that contingency amount. This change order actually, in numerical sense, wasn't the last change order, this change order actually occurred earlier in the process, but we've only gotten to this point now, which then puts us over the contingency, which is why it's before you to approve. So, I guess to answer your question was, we always work within the contingency, and when the dollar values then go outside of the contingency, we're back before you for approval.
Sure, and I understand and appreciate that, but none of those prior change orders had somebody in the line of business saying, "Whoa, I've got a question," or "I've got an issue with it," and.
Gary, yeah, you know what, I just, I'll tell you right now, Gary, I mean, I do this every day, okay, I've done buildings, and I've done putting in infrastructure, down roads, down sites, a whole development site, so I know what it is to open up the ground and put a pipe in the ground when it's raining, okay, and I just thought it was excessive the time, I thought that was excessive. Not in two years, three years, it doesn't rain every day, it rains a lot, you put a pump in the ground, you walk away from it because you're doing something else, so you can't, so if you, it takes an hour to put the pump in the ground, an hour to take the pump out of the ground, that's, say, three hours of actual work, you know, and then the guy is doing something else. So, I thought, I honestly thought it was quite excessive, but I voted yes because I honestly, and I will vote yes, because we have a contract with this contractor, and they submitted the bill, and someone approved that bill, someone said, "Yes, you will be paid," and we have to honor that. But I did tell Rahat, we need to be a little more close with how we're conducting this, and so, I fully get it, and I just thought it was high, that's where it came from, that's how the discussion amounted, but I'm, you know, it is on us to look at these numbers and to question them if we see a question, and that's, and all the, Callahan, you know, followed suit, which I appreciate, you know, and so, it's, and it's nothing against Rahat or anyone, it's just trying to do our jobs better.
Your Honor, I will say this in the most tender way possible, we have also gone out and are now, have had two sit-down meetings in our drafting MSAs with other consulting firms on the electric side, so as to have more choice.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
That's why this was non-consent.
You make a motion?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I will make a motion to pass Resolution 20-46-R, approving change order number one for MP Systems in the amount of $40,023.95 to complete substation construction services for the Northeast Distribution Substation.
I'll move. We have a motion by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Chansett, for the approval of Resolution 20-46-R. Further discussion? Kirk Calderon.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
No.
Meitzler.
Nope.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Posato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
And Baron.
Aye.
Motion's approved by, by vote of 12 yes, 2 no. Okay, moving to 14, the Administrator's Report, Laura.
It has truly been the challenge of my four years here, to try to keep up with the flow of information related to the COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak, and the stakes for our community could not be higher. It is the health and safety of our residents, and nothing could be more important. The city is striving to be a conduit of this information and a resource amid all of the other resources, but Griffin Price has put together a coronavirus page that is part of the city's website, wherein, on a daily basis, as we receive new information related to the virus, we will continue to post that information on that website. Just today, there was a presidential press conference where new guidelines have been issued by the CDC. As well, Governor JB Pritzker also held a press conference at the same time, which makes it really hard to monitor what's being said at both of the press conferences, but we split ourselves up and take good notes. Unfortunately, we've had to make some hard decisions with regard to the way that we interact with the public here at City Hall and at Public Works. We've always prided ourselves on working face-to-face with our residents, meeting them right there in their homes to try to assist them with problems that they are facing. And in this time, in order to preserve the health of the employees who are delivering critical services to our citizens, we've had to place some limitations on public access to our facilities here at City Hall and Public Works, and we apologize for that, but we feel that it's of paramount importance to protect the health of those individuals who are going to make sure that we continue to provide a high level of service to all of our citizens. There were a number of announcements made by the governor this afternoon, one of which is the Illinois Gaming Board has announced the suspension of all video gaming operations at all licensed video gaming establishments effective at 9:00 PM on Monday, March 16th through Monday, March 30th. Also, today, IML President, Mayor Leon Rockingham Jr. of the City of North Chicago, requested that JB Pritzker ask the federal government to activate the Community Disaster Loan Program. The program would provide loan opportunities to municipalities to make up lost revenues due to the depressed economic activity from COVID-19. Also, at his daily press conference this afternoon, the governor announced that he is mandating all public and private events with 50 or more people expected to be. is mandating all public and private events with 50 or more people expected to be in attendance be canceled through the end of April. The new public gathering restrictions begin on Wednesday, March 18th. There was actually new guidance, and not a mandate, that was issued by the White House and Centers for Disease Control today that suggests gatherings should be limited to no more than 10 people. Finally, the governor gave an order which suspends the requirement of the Open Meetings Act requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body. The governor has encouraged that public bodies postpone the consideration of public business when possible and allow for a process for video, audio, or telephonic access for members of the public when a meeting is necessary. And so today, I would like to ask whether City Council would like to consider suspension of our public meetings unless there is some business which is absolutely necessary. This would include meetings of our boards and commissions, and I would also ask that City Council consider a suspension of its own committee of the hall and City Council meetings.
I guess I would say that I'm not in favor of it. I think we have too much important business for the future of this town that we got to get together, and you guys have to have some conversation with some regularity. I don't know, maybe we do it on the computer, or we do it on some kind of a broadcast phone, but I just think that trying to throw a cloak of secrecy on the top of the government and we're not going to meet for three or four weeks is not good government. It doesn't represent the people, and it's totally contrary to what the American Constitution is all about. And I understand the importance of the health thing and everything else, but there's got to be some communication here. And I've been harking on this all day, and I've been all over Laura, and she's had a rough day with me, and she's not one I generally have to have a rough day with, but she's done, I can't say enough good things about her right now sitting here because she's had to deal with a real, including a mad Jeff Shulkey, and I try not to get to the man very often. But she's had to deal with me today, and we've rewritten things on the computer, and we've opened up offices, and we've done all kinds of stuff. Because I'm not a stay-at-home type that I'm going to sit home and bury myself someplace where nobody's going to be able to find me. I even went and got my jacket with, that Jim Roberts gave me one time, it says "Mayor" on it. So the last two days, I've been walking around town as best I could so I could be out there and be seen as the mayor, and I get a lot of questions about it. And, you know, people seem to be very appreciative that the government is out there moving around, seeing what's going on, and understanding what we're doing and how it's being done. And as long as she's on this subject, I got something else I need to share with you, and I don't know how much of it I can share with any reluctance, but at 7:30 this morning, I get a call at my house from Walmart, a corporate office, and they tell me that they are going to involve themselves, there's a new method of testing for Corona, and they're going to introduce it into some of their stores in the Chicago area, and three, they got, are three places that they're picking. I happen to know the mayor's in the other two towns where it was going to be, and Batavia was the place, and they're supposedly going to try to bring this to the Batavia Walmart. Now, to the credit of our police administration, the three chiefs and myself went out to the Walmart. The folks came in from Bentonville, and they were coming in here from all over, and they're going to attempt to set this up out there in some form or fashion, and I guess we're not ready to say how it's going to be done, because there's a lot of moving parts to this thing. They got to pitch some tents, and fortunately, I think we're of the understanding that from a business perspective, they can probably do this because it's a customer service that they're attempting to offer, but there's going to be strong restrictions on how many people they're going to be able to test at any given time during the day. And so we're very afraid that once this gets out that you're going to be doing this, that we're going to be overwhelmed with people wanting to go out and be tested, and there's only going to be so many. And so there's going to have to probably be some police issues involved in this. They've asked for some kind of medical support, which I don't think we can give them through tri-city ambulance. We're going to have to work that out with a private provider. There's a whole bunch of stuff that's come up here, but I think, I want you all to know about this, because I think there's a very good chance that any one of you could be asked by your constituents about what's with this test about Walmart. Now, hopefully, within tomorrow, we're supposed to have another meeting with them, and they're going to tell us some more about what's going on here. And hopefully by then, we'll be able to give you more solid information, but I want you all to know that Batavia is probably going to be one of the sites where this testing for Corona is going to go on. And it's going to be out at the Walmart store at Randall Road and Fabian Parkway. And so we're working with them, and another town they were at before they got to Batavia, the mayor's a friend of mine, so he called me up and told me what his issues were with it. And so when we got out there, we kind of found we had kind of some of the same issues. And I think they're trying the best, we're all trying the best we can, because I think this is important. If we could come up with a test that could resolve for a lot of people whether they've been exposed, or they're carrying it, or not, or whatever, I think this could be a valuable tool for the mess we're in right now. So nobody's trying to discourage this, but in the same token, we can't turn the corner at Fabian and Randall Road into some kind of a working melee out there where there's all kinds of things going on. Interestingly, when we met with Walmart this afternoon, they told us one of the things they're going to probably have to do is set up a portion of their parking lot for the protesters to assemble and protest the activity. And they say that whenever they are doing things now, there's protesters that show up, and so they have to take a part of their property and maybe have a cop or two stand there while people protest. So, I mean, they throw that at you, and it's like, whoa, where did this one come from? So we're working on it, and it's a work in progress, but I want you all to know that that's out there. So I didn't mean to horn in on your conversation.
No, not at all. Something else that I think should be taken into consideration, especially when it concerns our boards and commissions, is that a number of the appointees on those boards and commissions fall into the categories of high risk identified by the CDC. And so continuing to host in-person meetings would make them have to choose between fulfilling the civic obligation to the roles of their appointed position or being concerned more about their own health. Alderman, you're?
I agree with the mayor that I don't want to cancel the meetings. I think we can figure something out where, whether it's rotational or whatever, half of us can call in or something, and that way you still have a constructive conversation here, but we've cut down on the numbers of people that are here. There is a lot of stuff going on, and there may be stuff that comes up that we just aren't aware of right now that we should take action on as a council. So I say we continue the meetings and figure out a way to make it productive.
What if we?
Yeah, I think we need to lead by example on this. I think we're expecting people to take precautions. We've got the restaurants closed. We have a lot of, there's amazing technology available to us, whether it's web meetings, conference calls, whatever, where we can still conduct business, we can still meet, we can still communicate. We just don't all have to be in the same room. So I think that's the correct way to proceed, is to...
I would agree with that. I just think that we can't just flat-out say we're not meeting.
No, I think we meet, but we just, we take advantage of the technology that's available to us that lets us meet without being physically in a room and putting at risk board members, council members, staff, any public who wouldn't want to show up. I think we got to lead by example.
I would agree with that, and we already have the technology in Microsoft Teams. We use it a lot in my job, and it's very user-friendly. And I think it, leading by example, that's the first thing when I responded to you, Laura, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Yes.
I've been arguing on behalf of teachers that the idea, oh, it's not just about people at risk, it's about all the vectors that people have become by getting together.
Right.
And that's how it spreads, and that's the whole, that's what we're hearing from the professionals. We got to isolate.
Right.
And that's what I was uncomfortable about tonight, to be honest with you.
We had a lot to talk about tonight, obviously. Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I was just going to say, along the lines, though, of what everybody's saying, though, is we want to make sure that there's not the spread of misinformation that's out there, and the more that we're together conveying the information that we're readily receiving and that is, we're being updated with. I know I'm getting a lot of calls, I know I've talked with a lot of people over, well, what does this mean, what does this mean? And the more information that we have about how to convey what the new normal is for the time being, the more that that's going to tamp down, the more destructiveness, which is the fear, the anxiety, the more that we're relieving those things, we can allow some people to set their minds at ease as how to figure out how to go about their lives the new way for a time being. And the more that we're talking about that, getting that information out and meeting and seeing that presence, it is a calming effect. Maybe not to everybody.
Alderman Chancet?
I recognize what the former newspaper reporter must have looked like, seeing the face that you put on there. I recognize, I respect, and I understand, because I feel the same way as you, but we're also in a very extraordinary time. My question is, is it possible to, for one month, to maybe suspend the boards that report to us? There aren't any necessarily completely pressing things that could not be paused for one month. If, is there something legitimate that must, must, must be done? It seems to me we have a very large room, and we could probably spread out, maybe a little bit better if we absolutely had to for social distancing. My other fear is this, is, well, and aside from the fact that as a reporter, I would want to be able to see the meetings, if we were to do them by telephone, we should at least be able to invite the press to call in so they could hear the meetings that are happening. And then the other thing is, I think the way that the other countries killed this thing was by an absolute lockdown. My fear is that it's very possible in the next two or three weeks, it could be entirely possible that we won't be able to drive. It's very possible we might actually be locked down in our homes, so we might not have the ability to come here to meet.
So six counties in Northern California are shelter in place currently.
So I don't have a problem with doing a party line where we all call in and maybe lead, and I believe this next meeting we're having about emergency powers, there are very few things that cannot wait four weeks in the City of Batavia without major consent. I think we have given staff a lot of direction, and as I was going to say for the emergency meeting, as long as you don't put two more floors on the Shodine project or double your salary, we're fine with what's going on for four weeks. I think we can trust you to drive this ship for us. I trust you.
The things that are available in that, the powers policy that we're going to consider in the next meeting, I guess I'm fine with leaving especially the council meetings and maybe two COW meetings opposite the council meetings, so it'll leave us with four meetings per month until we figure out this month, or the rest of this month would just be one COW meeting and then the council, COW, council and COW meeting in April, so it would leave us four meetings in April. I think that's where we should start out with, and then see, you know, by maybe first or second meeting we have in April, where the rest of the world's at. And what maybe we're forced, or what's being forced upon us at that point. And if it's all good, then we move forward from that. But I think we need to have the meetings. I think we need, I wish Howard was here tonight so that we could figure out what it's really going to take to be able to do that.
I can tell Howard he has to figure it out.
Because one of my, one of my things, I mean, if we want to move this stuff apart in here, we can do that. We have a big screen right here, we have a big screen right there, and even though BATV is not allowed back into the high school right now, we're still broadcasting tonight. And we've still got programming that they're able to do remotely. Jim, who's back here in the closet right now, has laptop, the other two employees have laptops, so we're able to get that still out to the community.
Right.
Now, granted, that's only here because we have it set up here to send to the studio to be able to broadcast it. So we can still get that out to the public, so the press can watch it as it happens, if we can originate stuff in here. So that's the only thing I would say, is even if we're doing it remotely, if we can set it up, split-screen it, and...
Staff can drive it from in here.
They can figure out how to do it, and, you know, we can participate, and I think that works.
Zoom meetings, you can have 100 people on it.
Right.
Share your screen, and I don't think this is insurmountable.
No, I don't think it is either, but I think it's something that we should think about. You know, if we can do that, that I think is the best way to lead by example and say, hey, we can stay home, but we can still keep things going.
Right.
The governor's executive order today makes all the difference in the world, because prior to today, you would have to have a quorum present.
Right.
Here, now...
Annuated by the Open Meetings Act.
Suspended. Yeah, by the Open Meetings Act.
That's very extraordinary.
So what I hear is have the two city council meetings, and the weeks we don't have a city council meeting, have a committee of the hall meeting through the end of April.
Virtually.
Virtually, yes. And the boards and commissions are suspended.
So, can I just throw out there, I mean, it's not pressing for me, but if, you know, as the mayor was saying, you know, if we have to physically meet, and it's not a city council meeting, you know, we did, up until five, six, seven years ago, had committees. Perhaps if we had to physically be here, maybe we could just have enough confidence in one another that we just go to committee, so we're not all here. And this way here, we can keep space and just do that for two months or something, and if, that's, I'm just throwing it out, if we had to physically be here, that's all.
You mean like a super-secret subcommittee?
If you wanted one.
I think I have confidence that we'll be able to.
If we can do it, then that's fine. But if there was an issue, that's all I'm getting at.
I appreciate that. Okay. Scott, did you need any clarification with regard to boards and commissions?
No, I think that was one of the concerns that we had from some of the commissioners was attending in person and everything else. We have items on the agenda, but I think we will be fine to suspend it until the mid-April meeting with them. We'll just let the petitioners know that, you know, it's, things are going to have to wait because of the situation that we're in.
Are there any small businesses that would be affected with that, though?
There is one, but because of the suspension of video gaming, it would not affect it.
Perfect, okay.
Took care of itself.
Laura, I do have a question. You said boards and commissions. I know in the city code, there's a provision in there for a city board of health.
Yes, we don't have it.
Wish I could build one tonight.
We've got, you know, we've got, the code is there, we have a tool there, and there's a lot of information coming in that's drawing people away from their normal activities. Does it make sense to use that tool?
It doesn't, because the, it would be replicated by the Kane County. I was just discussing this city public health board with Kevin Drendel last week, and he felt that it was not, that it would be very ill-advised to seat a public board of health in a city, and in fact, he did some research on which cities do have public boards of health, and the only city near our size that would have that is Cicero. That was the only one that he could find. So his recommendation, his recommendation was that, at a time when there's a little less going on, that we repeal that.
Good enough.
Sure, no, it's a great question.
That came up a long time ago, and one of the things we talked about was, is we also follow the Kane County Storm Water Management, and that's a whole agency we don't have to have.
Right.
They can make the rules, and we can agree to them. And that's kind of what we do with the health board.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if the health board had powers in it that could supersede what the county didn't, hadn't done, if the mayor felt necessary, if that's something our own board of health could do before the county, if we turned into our local hotspot.
We're limited by what the state authorities give us, so there's not a whole lot we can do.
Yes, even with Home Rule, if they've spoken on a matter, then they've preempted it.
Yeah, my experience with, and working in a municipality that did have a board of health and a health department, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of staffing, and you're basically, you know, licensing restaurants and inspecting different things. It's creating your own health department is what you're doing.
No, 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 just wanted for the emergency stuff.
Thank you very much.
Okay, go to committee reports quickly, community development, Alderman Callahan?
Nothing for tomorrow.
Public utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor, for tomorrow, other remainder of the month.
City services, Alderman Wolf?
Not much for the remainder of the month, but just to call out to everybody that's got kids home for the next foreseeable weeks. Send them out, let them pick up brush, let them clean up the leaves, make sure the drains stay open in the streets, give them something to do. Brush pickup is coming up, so you can look it up on the website, which side of town is which week, but that'd be a great job for all these kids to do for a couple of weeks.
Government services, Alderman Chancet?
Wash your hands. That's it, just wash your hands.
We have other business from the council tonight? Alderman Miller?
I had a question that someone had asked me about, I just want to be able to tell her, give her an answer. The question was... her, give her an answer. The question was, why haven't we, not us, but why haven't either the state or us suspended the elections? And the reason she, she gave was because there are a bunch of families with kids that are home right now, and not being able to bring all of their children to the election place, they said they're not coming to vote.
Well, we don't control-
I know, and that's what I said, but I want to, I want to hear from, I want to give her an answer other than my own.
We're totally, that's totally handled by the county clerk, and he's under the guise of the state of Illinois, and it would take an executive order from the state of Illinois to cancel or move an election around.
Governor DeWine of Ohio today tried to suspend Ohio's elections until June, and a judge, and I don't know what level the court was, threw that out, said, no, you cannot do that. The elections are-
That's dangerous ground to tread on, boy. You're, you're in the face of the Constitution.
Boy, the only time I'm glad it not been Ohio.
And there were, there were opportunities for early voting for, for several weeks.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Under Mayor's report, I just want to make a couple of comments. Just more to the community than probably the Alderman, because most of you are aware of this, but this Corona thing has had a really devastating impact potentially on some of our business in town, specifically the restaurants and the bars. And the fact that as of midnight tonight, they're out of business till the end of this month, they're going into next month. I mean, think about that. It would be like somebody coming to tell the rest of us, well, we're not going to give you a paycheck for the next two or three weeks. And, you know, many of them have bills to pay and, you know, inventories to keep up and customers to have. So, our intention, and I got to tell you, the Main Street Director is sitting in the audience, and I want to take my hat off to her and also to the chamber folks, because they've gone, they've gone to the extra effort, and I hope this document gets well circulated. They've put out a document today in which they're outlining every restaurant in town that wanted to tell us how they could try to stay open. Now, they can still do some stuff. They can cook and whatever, they just can't invite you in to sit at a table and let them serve you. So, this afternoon, and Scott over at Daddy O's Diner, I happened to run into him coming out of the door, and I said, he says, I don't know what I'm going to do. And I said, well, you know, worse comes to worse, let's get the word out, and you can have people order off your menu and call you. And I said, you know, I've already talked to the police department, we could put some kind of a service lane right in front. And now, this is on private property, but I would be envisioning the city would be agreeable to do this, starting at Panera and then going to Riverside and then going down to Daddy O's, and just have a pickup lane right there that you could just call over and get what you want. Now, you know, the ones that already have dedicated drive-through windows, they're going to be alive and well and open tomorrow. I've already heard some, you know, there's daily coffee clutches that meet, and I've already heard some conspiracies going on about where they could go through the drive-through window and buy their coffee, and where they could go drink that coffee together at different locations in, in Batavia. So, we'll see how that all works out. I had one of our bar owners call me this afternoon and wanted to know if I was given this power that we're talking about here in the next meeting, would I be able to waive the, override the governor's rejection of him serving liquor? And I said, afraid not. I said, I'm super, you know, I'm underneath the state of Illinois, and they dictate any mayor in the state what rules you can. If they say no liquor, there's no liquor, no, no video machines, and, you know, you can't have customers inside the restaurant. So, we're trying, so, but this is going to be a very problematic thing for a whole bunch of us. So, I guess I would encourage us all, if we can, to go through a drive-through window or stop at a local restaurant and call them up and say, you know, I want to order this and this and this, and either have somebody deliver it or go get it yourself and see if you can get some, something done for that. Because there, there's going to be some people hurting, and I, I am concerned right now of what this whole situation is going to do to the city's financial issues, because I think we're going to lose some, some serious amount of revenue here in the next few weeks. And, you know, I think we're going to have to really watch cautiously what we spend money on for the rest of the year. Now, some of it, we already got, you know, dedicated funds that we can do, but there's some ideas that are out there that we really don't have the money right now to, to do much with. And I think we've got to be very judicious and cautious as we move forward for the remainder of the year as to what we can spend on, because this was totally an unknown that hit us right between the eyes the last few days as they put this into place. One place I did stop today, and I want to give these folks a special plug, and that's to the Batavia Interfood, Interfaith Food Pantry down on South Shumway Avenue. And I was able to meet with Eileen Passerio, who is the new executive director down there. And I told her that I wanted to make some comments about her work down at the meeting tonight, so it would be on TV. So, she was kind enough at 5:16, she stayed after work and sent me a memo. And she says, if people are looking for ways to help, monetary donations are always needed and welcome. People can drop them off directly on our website at bataviafoodpantry.org, or you, or you can allow us to purchase what we need from the, if you send us money, we can purchase what we need from the Northern Illinois Food Bank and local grocery stores. Secondly, she says, if people wish to volunteer, we still need a small group of volunteers to fill client orders. They can see when and where we need the help on our website. I guess you can go on there, and that, that's there. Then, the most important one, I think, is community donations of canned goods, self-stable foods and household products can be donated at the pantry on Tuesdays through Fridays from 8:00 a.m. till noon. They'll have carts outside the double red doors for people to place their donations in, that, because they're trying to limit building access, just like we've talked about here tonight because of not trying to get too many people cluttered into a building. Some of the current needs are ready, or, see, some of our current needs are ready-to-eat soup, boxed pasta, garbage bags, and large-sized, larger-sized diapers, sizes three, four, five, and six. And I will tell you that I think we're going to have a whole bunch of people that are really going to need this service. So, if anybody can find some place in their heart or their wallet to help support the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, they can probably use all the help that we can give them. So, Alderman Wolf?
I'd like to jump in on that. Alderman Chansett and I had talked earlier about the second meeting we're going to have tonight is an emergency meeting, is usually a special meeting. Would, all of us would get paid. And, and in the past, I would have said, let's not get paid for it. But I think with Dan's prompt, I think it might be a good idea if we were to all take that paycheck, that one paycheck from the special meeting since we're here, and then donate that to the food pantry.
It is customary that we typically waive it at the beginning of the meeting. I would, I'm saying, I would only accept it if it was possible I could pass it through.
I think you'd have to do that by a motion.
We would.
It would probably be easiest if you were to make a motion that the money that would have been paid to you tonight designate the city to make a donation to the food pantry, rather than have to issue the checks.
Right. And, and that's what I was going to say, what would be the easiest way to do that?
It'd be more expeditious to do it that way.
If you could figure that out with Peggy, and then-
Yep.
You know, if everybody's okay with that, I would make the motion that we forego the payment for the special meeting tonight and take that money and have that donate to the pan, to the food pantry.
Second. A motion by Alderman Wolf, Second of Alderman Chansett, the council wishes to donate their pay from the second meeting tonight to be donated to the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry for purchase of food to support Batavia residents. Any discussion on that? Kirk called the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Urr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
And Chansett?
Aye.
Motion's passed unanimously, say 14 to nothing. Thank each and every one of you men and women, for that's a very generous offer, so.
Well, sure, you give me 14 on that one.
All right. I think that's enough from me for the night. Again, please keep in mind, and as you talk to your fellow constituents, or friends, or whatever, encourage them to visit the Batavia restaurants in the next couple of weeks, because you're going to have to go through the drive-through line or call them up on the phone. And I think that the, that the, can you print me some circulars, or is that, I want to distribute it to these folks.
Oh, sure.
We'll send it out to them tomorrow.
Yeah, and, and what I've been telling-
Come up and use the mic so that we get it on air.
I thought I talked a lot. What we've been encouraging people to do, as they call, just find out what they can do, is if you typically order out on Friday, order out on Friday, if you typically go out with your spouse or your loved ones on Saturday afternoon for lunch, go order carryout, have it at home, but still frequent those businesses. They've worked really hard, a lot of them that did not have options for, for carryout or delivery have worked really hard in the last 24 hours to put those in place, some special menus, some special deals. If you do that, I know, for instance, Bulldog's Red Hots is doing free kids meals with adult meals. River's Edge has got some, some curbside suppers you can pick up. So, they're really working hard to try to stay afloat. So, anything you can do that way. And thank you as well for what you just did for the food pantry. I don't know if everybody's aware, but our food pantries in our shelters, we as citizens aren't allowed to contribute fresh perishable food. They can only get that as overage from restaurants and grocery stores. And right now, there's no overage from restaurants and grocery stores. So, the fact that you're contributing cash is going to help them immensely. So, thank you very much.
And if you normally add a gratuity, add a gratuity.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know some of our restaurant owners have expressed interest in still trying to collect that gratuity and pass it on to their staff. If you know someone in the, in the wait service, be kind, reach out, and do what we can for these folks, because it might be a long haul.
And there's also, if, if your favorite restaurant is closed or going to be closed for a while, go and buy a gift certificate so when they reopen, that's money that they have currently.
Right. Gift certificates are great. We've been encouraging that. Also, for some of our larger facilities, you know, if you were planning a birthday party in the summer, if you were planning a graduation party, call them, see if you can put a deposit down now. That cash flow is going to help keep them afloat, and it's money you may have, you're already going to spend anyhow. But I also have to say, I have to give a shout out to my merchants. Our merchants are suffering as well. You know, today, it's the restaurants because they were shuttered, our restaurants and bars. But our, our regular shopkeepers, they're suffering as well, and many of them are doing the same thing, curbside delivery, you know, posting pictures on Facebook of some of their products. It's important that we show them some love as well. So, anytime you can, anytime you feel the urge, if you've got a favorite store that, that, you know, you can put a gift card in an Easter basket, or say, well, I'm going to buy summer clothes anyhow, so I'll grab a gift card now, they're really going to appreciate anything we can do for them.
And I want to say, just one quick thing, I really appreciate how fast you and Margaret went above board and implemented what you did. I got some calls today, and I've seen a lot of the reaction about getting that information out. As it was being discussed, we knew they were going to be appreciative. It's very appreciated, and I know how fast you did it. I know it, what personal sacrifice to kind of taking time out of doing it. But I really appreciate your dedication to it, and it's-
At the end of the day, we're advocates for our local business community. You know, we're advocates for our residents as well, and providing, you know, places where they can gather. But, but we're both advocates for our local business community, and that, in essence, is what we're here for. So, thank you for your-
Excellent job.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Who wants to make the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Well, Alderman Wolf, Second of Alderman, for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, I'm going to reconvene the special meeting of the Batavia City Council for, I don't remember the date. Monday, March 16th, 2020.
Still the 16th. We're not that late.
We've been going here for almost three hours.
And Mayor, I'm going to sit up. Mayor?
Laura, you want to, you got the, as the director in the audience-
I know. I just thanked him for being here this evening, because certainly, ESDA plays an important role in the things that we're going to discuss tonight. So, this emergency meeting was called to consider ordinance 20-27, granting emergency powers to the mayor and making a local disaster declaration. Times like these are unprecedented. It is important that as a city council and as a city, that we make sure that we have all of the tools possible, and that we put ourselves in the best position to accept resources that may become available. As well, we want to make sure that in the event that some action might be taken with regard to the health and safety of our citizenry, that if taking that action faster would reduce the impact, the negative impacts that might happen, or provide a reduction in that negative impact sooner, then maybe that is some powers that we may consider giving to the mayor. And we're a lot further ahead in this than some other municipalities. Some other municipalities' ordinances that I see them passing right now, they are actually having to enact a civil emergencies ordinance. The city of Batavia, in its prior wisdom, has already implemented this legislation. So, the ordinance that we are talking about today endorses the powers that are enumerated in this ordinance. The first is to be able to issue a written declaration of a state of emergency. And a civil emergency under the code, as it would apply to this situation, would be any natural disaster or man-made calamity, including flood conflagrations, cyclone tornado, earthquake or explosion within the corporate limits of the city resulting in death or injury of persons, or the destruction of property to such extent that extraordinary measures must be taken to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. Section, this is Title V and Chapter 1. Section 2 is the written declaration. Whenever an emergency as defined by Section 5-1, 1 of this chapter exists, the mayor shall declare the existence of a means of written declaration setting forth the facts which constitute the emergency. And then, in Section 5-1-3, enumerates the mayor's powers under the Civil Emergencies Act, which is to, to implement a curfew. After proclamation of a civil emergency by the mayor, he may order a general curfew applicable to such geographical areas of the city, or the city as a whole, as he deems advisable and applicable during such hours of the day or night as he deems necessary in the interest of the public safety and welfare. And then, he may also issue orders. After the proclamation of a civil emergency, the mayor may also, in the interest of public safety and welfare, make any or all of the following orders. One would be, order the closing of retail liquor stores, including taverns and private clubs or portions thereof, wherein the consumption of intoxicating liquor and beer is permitted. Order the discontinuance of the sale of alcoholic liquor by any wholesale or retailer. Order the discontinuance of selling or distributing or giving away gasoline or other liquid flammable or combustible products in any container other than a gasoline tank properly affixed to a motor vehicle. Order the discontinuance of selling, distributing, dispensing, or giving away of any firearms or ammunition of any character whatsoever. And then, five, issue such other orders as are imminently necessary for the protection of life and property. So, as you can see, the enumeration in the mayor's powers under the Civil Emergencies Ordinance are restricted to those that would address the life and property issues associated with the particular natural disaster or civil emergency, as it were, that we are currently facing. And so, the ordinance would both declare that local disaster, and then also invoke the mayor to utilize those emergency powers if he were to deem those necessary. I believe earlier today, the mayor provided a letter in which he further enumerated or made his commitment only- in which he further enumerated or made his commitment only to apply those in a very narrow fashion, in other words, to the emergency at hand and only when time was of the essence. And that in doing so, that he would seek the advice of this council in the event that time permitted him to do so, because he would want that in order to make sure that you had an opportunity to weigh in on the decisions. I'm not sure if the city attorney has anything else that you would like to add in terms of the effect of this decision.
Not really. The ordinance as laid out essentially is renumerates and restates what's already provided for in the city code, it's already provided for in the Illinois Municipal Code and the Emergency Services Act. The ordinance itself does not specifically grant the mayor any particular powers or authorize or approve any certain orders, but just a restatement that he does have some authority to act if and when the need arises. And the only other thing I will also say too, that under the ordinance, the state of emergency would only exist until the adjournment of the next following city council meeting. So they're not like these orders would continue on in perpetuity. If you'd issue an order for that to be effective after your next council meeting, you would have to approve that action at the next council meeting.
I think that's a good way of doing it. I mean, it
Keep renewing it.
You know, it has to be revisited every meeting so that we, you guys still have comfort with what's going on here and you understand everything that's been done. And certainly it would be my intention, as I hopefully just tried to do with you about the Corona testing that Walmart may do, and that we share with you anything we know about that's going on, that you should immediately have knowledge of. And as more, as we find out more, we'll give you more information. So that's the antenna.
First, I want to say thank you very much for the letter that you sent out today. Section 5-1-3, 5, the all other orders thing, is kind of scary. It's this all encompassing, if you feel like you need to do it, then bang, bang, you're going to do it. I don't see, like I'd said in our previous meeting, issue, you know, adding additional floors. I'm very happy you specifically delineated you will not be making any decisions on community development projects which have nothing to do with this. You get to be the guy that gets to make the on the spot decision to commandeer a retail center that is vacant, turn it into a morgue. That's not a decision I feel like making, and I trust you to make a very difficult decision like that. So thank you.
One of the things I need to do though is I need to have the clerk call the roll here to just make sure everybody's at this meeting.
Oh, yes.
Inadvertently didn't do that. So would you please call the roll?
Would you take that power away too?
Miller?
Here.
Masato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knob?
Here.
Chanson?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Let me request, due to my mistake, that you insert that at the beginning of the [laughter].
I feel like
And broadcast.
And you could say I said that.
But before you vote, I feel like I would be remiss if I did not mention the role in ESDA in our emergency management services. We are extremely fortunate here in the city of Batavia to have a very dedicated core of volunteers. And they are very aptly led by their manager, Mark Davis, who many of us know as the guy who does this or this when it comes to incoming weather events. And I mean, it's no small measure. It really is no small job to be the one where there are 30,000 people gathered for a fireworks event to say, the best thing to do in the interest of the health and safety of these 30,000 people is to ask them to go home as quickly as possible and perhaps come out again the next day and we'll have a fireworks show, especially because he serves on the fireworks committee. So we thank you, Mark, and we thank the members of our ESDA services team who are there at all of our large public events in order to provide safety services. But in the event that a, an emergency was declared where we had to engage our emergency operations center here in Batavia, these individuals would also be a very, they would be a critical part of our being able to face those challenges. And they keep themselves well trained and we're lucky to have them.
Alvin Burr, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess from a legal standpoint, I would really like to look at it because there's the Stafford Act, which constitutes what a natural disaster is. And I don't think that this falls as a natural disaster based on that act before we would make any motion to do anything like this.
So the Stafford Act has actually already been invoked in the coronavirus, the COVID-19 outbreak case currently.
Okay.
So we are in Stafford Act.
Okay. So the, which is interesting because it doesn't seem like it's supposed to apply. But secondarily, I don't see the need for it. I get it. I just think that the small portion of things that can be done, I think it's bad optics personally. Speaking on good authority, there have been zero incidents at any grocery store I'm affiliated with across the country of any violent acts or anything like that happening in these grocery stores. Maybe that changes. I don't know. But I just don't see the need for it right now. It just seems optically, it does not seem like a good thing. And that's it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, not even so much about optically, when we are in extraordinary times and considering extraordinary measures, we should have extraordinary deliberation when we are talking about these things. And as a result of that, I think there are things to consider and weigh. The fact that the Illinois Municipal League has put this out, but they have not recommended doing it at this time. I truly see the validity in doing this from an emergency standpoint, point of view. The municipal minute and the Ansel Glink articles that you sent us today clearly stated that to the point that some people are concerned about some of the scary language, that can be avoided by if it's not related to the coronavirus, you remove that language from the, from the concern that the people will have. Because just passing some of the carte blanche has created in this state a lot of anxiety, a lot of unnecessary fear that can be avoided by saying, yes, we want the mayor to be able to commandeer a, you know, Sam's Club if need be for a morgue, but not to worry that some, that your personal property is going to be commandeered, taken over, applied for, like, you know, all the other things that people are passing that you go, well, you don't need that for coronavirus. And I understand that other communities may be saying, well, this isn't necessarily about Corona, it's about all those other times.
Yeah.
Well, then at those other times, we don't, we can have a longer discussion because there is no emergency. Because the fact that this, a lot of people are coming to, oh, we need to talk about this now and pass this now. That is always bad government. You never make laws while the Reichstag's burning. And that creates a lot of anxiety that will create fear and trust in a community that leads to future problems and the misinformation that we're seeing and the hoarding that's as a result of that. Because these times are solely centered on fear. And the more that we are doing to quash the fear, continue as normal, show that there are things that are needed. Why? Because there's things you guys aren't thinking about with what if there's bodies, what if there's this. Pass those things when, when we need to and make sure that everything's related to the coronavirus. I know some of the concern that when this was brought up was because the fear that we wouldn't be able to meet as a quorum, we wouldn't be able to do that. Well, that's gone now. That's gone. That has actually resolved itself. So the concern about putting these things into place for the Open Meetings Act, we don't have to worry about that anymore. So just as we're weighing, not saying one way or another, weigh those things because when we're talking about those things which the disease will pass, but when you start on things that people perceive as civil liberty issues, be cautious and weigh them consequentially.
Part of the reason we're sitting here having a discussion like this is because people didn't want to take steps that they needed to take because it was bad optics. That's why we're sitting here having this discussion. And now we're going to not take steps to prepare ourselves because it's bad optics? That's ridiculous.
Alvin Knob?
Mark, you made a point about things that haven't happened at places. They closed the restaurants and bars because people didn't take the recommendations. And they're stopping video gaming because that's still an opportunity for people to sit and share germs. And that would affect Speedway? That's the only one left, I think, in town. But what about places that have video gaming geared towards kids? The bars had to close. Did all of Funway close or did Funway's bar close?
Funway's bar closed.
What about the gaming?
Funway closes.
Do they close all of it? Because that would be another one of those opportunities there. One of those things that 513B5, well, nobody else thought to stop those type of activities. That would be something where he could step in and say, you know, somebody forgot about the video games that kids play in a public area.
And not have to wait until the next city council meeting.
Exactly.
Two weeks away.
And realize these powers that were given the mayor, whether used or not, only lasts till our next meeting. And at that next meeting, then we decide, do we get to keep the, do we get to let him keep those powers? Or do we stop at that point?
I get that. I totally get that. I just think that there's things in there that have nothing to do with buying guns, closing liquor stores. Right now, what's probably going to happen in the next week or two anyways, the governor's going to shut everything down anyway. And it's going to be out of our hands and it doesn't really matter. I just don't think that those individual tiny little things, the county is going to take over, is going to create a morgue. There's a bunch of things that are going to happen. And it's not as though, this isn't the movie Outbreak where people were dying like crazy fast. This is, there's been 60 to 70 deaths in the US. And that's over the period of several weeks. It's just that there's things in there, to Marty's point, that just have no point being part of this. And that is going to create that fear that then, oh, hey, the mayor could shut down the liquor store. So now there's a run on liquor stores tomorrow. Because everybody sees that and they run to liquor stores because they want to buy up all that stuff before they're told that they can't for the next month.
And that's why I was specific when I said 513B5. That's the one that really is the one that pertains. 1, 2, 3, and 4 are the kind of, there's rioting in the street and fires are being, this one's specific to that very last one that's listed there that really does apply.
You know, Joe, it's interesting you bring that up because there are two definitions to emergency and the other emergency is that public rioting and that type of thing. So those, those four must more apply to that.
Liquor, guns, and gasoline don't go together.
Right.
First of all, thank you, Drew, for saying it out loud. Our federal government has let us down so much. From the top down, it has been incumbent upon the state governors to make pronouncements to stem the fear of this. We're trying to flatten this infection curve. That's what the whole, what the whole point of this is. We are not making any laws tonight. This is already a law. We are making a pronouncement this evening, if this should go forward, that we're granting the mayor some authority for a couple of weeks. I would expect that if we do pass this tonight, there will be a standing item, item number, right after roll call, do we continue the emergency order? And we don't know if this, I'm not fear mongering, but it's a mutation away from something weird. It is. We are a supply chain problem away from a food riot, technically. I would rather err on the side of giving you as many tools as we can to address an issue that we might not be able to address otherwise in a creative manner. I do believe you'd be doing it with, you'd be consulting us. I feel like we should be leaders here. This is, it's not fear mongering. What we're doing is we're telling our citizens that we have the authorities because we've already deliberated about this and we can fix our problems locally. If someone interprets that as saying, you're going to close my liquor store down, then they have a bigger problem. They really, they really do.
Yeah, I would just, I would just like to thank the couple of conversations that I had earlier today between that and obviously the topics that we've been discussing tonight about making sure that we're revisiting this with each, you know, open meeting that we will continue to have. I feel assured that I can support this. So.
I would recommend you put it right after, you know.
Please.
I would just like to mention that yesterday, the governor said something that I thought was, I really appreciated it. And Dan, I appreciate what you say because our leaders have dropped the ball at many levels, especially the federal level. But the governor yesterday said he hopes that we look back and say that we over, we overreacted because then we will know we survived. Because we, because 400 people in Italy died the other night, two nights ago. Last night was over 300.
365, yes.
So I say, let's air, let's, we can't overdo it here.
I don't think anybody's saying not to overdo it, though. I mean, I think we're people are getting mad at the wrong people. I think it's to your point. I mean, listening to Cuomo today, he was saying the only reason that it will work is if you don't hyper localize and everybody have a patchwork of different plans. That if the federal government enacted what they needed to enact, then you wouldn't have to worry about somebody from New York declaring an emergency but going over to Connecticut, which is, to his point, that's how you stop it. I don't think a lot of people already know that there are powers that you already have where you can call out the National Guard for militia and stuff like that. So it's like, a lot of this stuff, people are afraid about, but also don't just necessarily get mad that we're talking about it to assuage some of the concerns.
I'm just saying, what do we have to lose?
Nobody's, nobody's said anything other than that yet.
We don't have anything to lose, right? You know, Dr. Fauci has been saying, this guy has been saying, it's going to get worse before it gets better. We're just going to be prepared. That's all we're saying. So I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, you've got the power.
The responsible thing.
I don't see Mayor Shulkey being abusive at all. And we're going to revisit it before every meeting, at every meeting. So optics be damned.
Over and over with that, I'm all for it. I, I don't have any envision of me using this at all as long as everything is going properly.
I hope we never have to use it. That'd be the best situation.
It's just to be there in case there's an emergency.
Right.
As Americans, we are so cavalier. I work at a bank. I'm controlled by the Fed. I am at this guy's mercy because he is not going to close banks down. So I'm going to have to keep coming to work.
I'm with you, Dan.
I looked at the Burger King next door. It was full of people. Each one of them a possibility of a vector passing this thing on. We are not taking this seriously. If we granted you these authorities tonight, the most powerful statement you could make would be your first action would be is to institute a curfew. And I know how crazy that sounds, but you would literally be saving Batavians' lives if you, if you demanded that people stay home tonight. Flattening this infection curve is the smartest thing we can do. And the gentleman who accidentally won the election won't say it. He won't make us stay home. He won't make us stay home. He could save so many lives.
That's a matter of opinion.
There'd be a lot of people who'd say, well, I never heard it, or I never got word about it.
China shut themselves down and it sounded so draconian. I watched the John, did anyone see the John Oliver special?
I haven't seen it yet.
It's, it's funny, but it's not funny. And I was watching it in Mexico and just describing how weird it was that they made everyone stay at home and they looked down on the streets and everything was quiet, all the construction sites were closed down, how scary it looked. And then he said, and then they rolled the speakers out. And the speaker said, you can't leave your house for a week. Here we are a couple of weeks later, they're winning. It's because we couldn't be this close to each other. Me accidentally give it to Alan. It would be smarter for us to stay home. And that's, that's all I'm saying. I don't feel like we're overreacting. I feel like we're saving lives if, if we tell people to stay home. So I, there's part of me that says you, you should order Batavians to, I'm sorry, encourage Batavians to stay home and drink the liquor that they bought.
So I think I need a motion to prove this.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alvin O'Brien, second by Alvin Chanson for the approval of the ordinance for the emergency preparedness. Any further discussion? For call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Uwer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Present.
Knob?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye. I think she could have voted.
Wolf?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
So, that vote is 12 yes, one no, and one present.
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Nothing personal, Mayor.
Wait, wait till you see what he orders for you to do.
Excited. You did the first curfew.
Spot zoning in the fifth ward. Your patio's too big.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.